All right, looks like we're all settled here. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the regular meeting to order and announce that the Board did meet in closed session and no action was taken. Would also like to announce that tonight's meeting is being video recorded and will be available on the district's YouTube channel. I would like to announce that there are cards available at the table just outside of the boardroom for anyone who wishes to address the Board. If you wish to address the Board, complete a card and hand it to the staff member at the right of my side. And please be sure to complete the card indicating whether the matter you wish to address is on the agenda or not on the agenda. If the matter is on the agenda, we will assume you wish to speak when it comes time to address that item and will hold it until that time. And first, on the agenda, we have a special treat this evening. I would like to call on Ms. Priscilla Cox, who will be leading us in the pledge, and turn it over to my colleague.
Representing Calvine High School for the Pledge of Allegiance this evening is Ms. Priscilla Cox. A former school board member and president, Mrs. Cox has an extensive background in education and community service. First elected to the Elk Grove Unified School District Board of Education in November of 1994, she served as a board member for 20 years, from December 1994 to December 2014. She was selected as Board President in 1998, 2004, 2010, and 2014. Prior to her board service, she taught math and science at the secondary level for 10 years, first with the Long Beach Unified School District and later with the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District in Sacramento County. Mrs. Cox's two daughters both attended Elk Grove Unified School District schools from kindergarten through 12th grade and now have families of their own. She enjoys time with her family, especially her three grandsons, volleyball, skiing, church, and her book club. Mrs. Cox's leadership on education and community issues has established her as a well-respected resource. A longtime and well-respected member of the California School Boards Association, she has made presentations at annual CSBA conferences and has represented CSBA on state advisory panels. Ms. Cox is particularly interested in the district's math and science programs, the career technical academies, and in parent involvement at both elementary and secondary levels. As a member of the District Service Learning Steering Committee that oversees implementation of service learning, she encourages students to participate in school and community service learning. Although Mrs. Cox's accomplishments as a former board member are extensive, tonight we honor her here for her years of service at Calvin - Calvine High School as a student mentor. Mrs. Cox contributes her time weekly to meet and mentor students, monitor their progress, and help them prepare for life after high school. Mrs. Cox considers her work at Calvine to be a highlight of her time. She worked closely with Calvine High School staff to develop and implement an award-winning interdisciplinary environmental study curriculum to study the creek which flows near the Calvine High School property. Mrs. Cox was involved in bringing service learning to our district, and she has been able to see the results of her efforts in action, both inside and outside the classroom, through Calvine High School's students' projects. Several Calvine students were selected for prized internships with the local water district and later received employment. Mrs. Cox has stated that it was truly inspirational to see how policy turned into action and benefited the students and the community. Calvine's ability to provide a clear and consistent vision regarding student learning has enabled the school to maintain an environment of high expectations for students and parents. Mrs. Cox truly exemplifies the idea of community partnership with Calvine High School. It is an honor to present Mrs. Priscilla Cox and her husband?
Family? Are you staying? Okay. It's what the paper says, to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, very much so.
Please stand, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask the Board to come down and also take a photograph with Ms. Cox.
I did want to mention a few things while you're coming down. I, first of all, wanted to thank the Board for this type of recognition. I also want to thank our leadership in secondary Edmas, Tina Penna, for providing such a unique experience for students in alternative high schools. And particularly want to thank Joe Arroza, the principal of Calvine High School, for his work in giving opportunities to students to succeed when they come to school with some very great personal challenges. It's been - the mentoring program is extremely unique and really prepares students for life after high school. And it's been a pleasure to work with Lindsay Beth Panetta, who is the teacher in that - in that program and brings a lot of enthusiasm and connection with the students. But it's really a staff and principal that really provide that support and encouragement to students to have these opportunities to succeed, and I want to thank Mr. Arroza for that.
Thank you.
We miss you.
Good to see you. Thank you, and congratulations.
Good to see you. How's it going? Congratulations.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Good to see you. How about another round of applause for this wonderful educator? Thank you so much for all that you've done for the district. If I could just follow in your footsteps, you're a true mentor of mine and you've done so much, so thank you so much. All right. All right, next, we have high school student representatives. And first up, we have Monterey Trail.
Good evening, Board President Bobby St. Allen, Superintendent Mr. Christopher Hoffman, and members of the Board. My name is Christina Lee, and I'm the ASB president at Monterey Trail High School.
And I am Kelsey Cole, ASB vice president.
This year, we have three students who will be representing Monterey Trail in this Grove Literature Journal's 10-year anniversary. Jaslee Nagar, Anne Capcap, and Rajya Hemingway will have their poems published through amazon.com. On March 17 through 18, sophomores took the KC exam while the senior class of 2015 presented their senior presentations to a panel of judges where they were able to reflect back on their last four years of high school and MT's impact on them. Monterey Trail will be hosting our annual open house on April 20. This fun night includes games and activities from different departments, performances by Theater, Impulse, and Apprentice, and more, and there'll even be a spaghetti dinner sponsored by our very own band and cheer. This event really gives parents the opportunity to see what goes on around our school.
On Saturday, March 7, the junior class of 2016 had a successful prom at the Laguna Town Hall while the seniors are preparing and looking forward to their senior ball on May 9 with an underwater theme of Poseidon's Paradise. Monday, March 23 through Friday, March 26, the Mustangs on our campus participated in Spirit Week consisting of Minion Monday, Tie-Dye Tuesday, Sports Day Wednesday, Chat Thursday, and a Whiteout and Neon Friday to kick off our Let's Glow Crazy Spring Sports Blacklight Rally. One of the main highlights of this rally was our very entertaining and first-ever Students vs. Teachers rap battle. The senior class is gearing up for all their upcoming events in May, including Senior Ball, Picnic, Sunset, Breakfast, Awards Night, and Graduation. We're all very excited for these events during our last month of high school.
Our spring sports season has begun and is off to a great start. Our swim team's Valerie Nguyen, who's only a freshman, is currently holding six personal records and is the first girl on our swim team to make it to sections in the last five years. Also, our men's volleyball team is going strong. They have won 12 games so far in their season with only two losses. These boys share a passionate chemistry that allows them to motivate and push each other towards improvement. They do many team bonding activities outside of the volleyball court, such as playing bubble soccer. Our annual girls' powder puff game is on May 19 in the Mark Makers Stadium. Our senior girls will be playing against our junior girls with each team consisting of 50 girls. We will also have a cheerleading squad for the occasion consisting of MT's finest boys.
Polly Ohana held their eighth annual talent show on March 20 with exceptional talents from many students. They are also preparing for their upcoming 11th annual luau, which will take place on May 23. Polly Club's luau represents a variety of cultures through different dances such as tuningaling, haka, hula, tahishin, and even hip-hop. Over spring break, our theater students attended the Shakespeare Theater Festival in Ashland, Oregon. These students were able to enjoy a number of plays as well as events and activities that enhance their overall experience. Our theater director, Sarah Townsend, and her students have also received an honorable invitation to perform at the American High School Theater Festival in Scotland during August 2016. They are all looking forward to this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and are working hard to fundraise for the trip.
April 10 through April 18, our theater program will be presenting the Spring Musical, The Music Man. A truly collaborative effort, this production features sets designed by students in Sal La Scola's Exploring Technology class. Not only are there more than 40 MT students performing in the show or working behind the scenes, there are nine EGUSD elementary school students representing four elementary schools performing in the children's ensemble. April 30 through May 2, our Impulse Dance Company will represent their annual mainstage showcase at Sheldon High's Performing Arts Center. This showcase is a compilation of Impulse's dances through the year consisting of lyrical hip-hop and even Bollywood dances. We encourage you all to come out and support Impulse and enjoy an amazing show.
Christina and I thank you for your continuous time and support through these past few board reports. Not only do we thank the Board, but also the teachers and staff at Monterey Trail for providing us with the skills and knowledge to prepare us for college and the overall wonderful high school experience. We thank you for the opportunity to represent MTHS and hope you have enjoyed all the news we've shared with you throughout the school year.
Great job. Thank you. Excellent report. Next, we have Valley High School.
Good evening, Superintendent Hoffman, President St. Allen, members of the Board, and Ms. Heine. My name is Mariah Haragi, and I am a senior at Valley High School.
And my name is Jack Danho, and I'm also a senior at Valley High School. During the last couple of months, Valley has had some exciting events we want to share with you. On February 19, Valley had its Block V celebration. We hold our Block V celebration for students who have maintained a minimum GPA of 3.5 or above. The event was held in our small gym, and we had a full house. The event consisted of pizza, chocolate, teamwork with our towel building techniques, awards for every student, and some special personal awards that our principal, Mrs. Bowler, gave out. One of these awards she gave out was best handshake. We are really proud of our Vikings and look forward to welcoming even more students at next year's celebration. Our student body was delighted to kick off the spring season with our Spring Spirit Week. Our students and staff got involved in the weekly activities. "All Blue Everything" was our school's motto for the week. Monday, Spirit Day was Backwards Day. Students got wacky and turned their clothes backwards. Tuesday was Twin Tuesday. Our students got together with their best friend and dressed like identical twins for the day. Wednesday was Battle of the Sexes. Boys wore blue, girls wore pink. Thursday was Trippy Hippie Thursday. Our students got groovy with their hippie looks for the day. And Friday was All Blue Everything. Our students painted the campus blue with their clothes and face paint. On March 6, we had our Spring Sports Rally titled Spring to the Past, led by our rally directors Eli Sanders and Isouda Sanabria. This rally was our third of the year and the most pumped one yet. The crowd was pumped to be involved in our mass karaoke game where students had to finish singing the tune that was being played over the speakers. Even our Bleed Blue teachers joined the action as they battled and beat our baseball team in a crowd-deciding dance battle. We also had our performances by our VHS cheer team and our Footworks Dance Company.
Speaking of performances, Footworks Dance Company had their annual showcase on March 21st. This year's events - this year's event was titled Main Stage. Footworks spent a year preparing for this night. From summer up until the day of the event, the dancers took extra hours after school and on weekends. The show featured hit songs uptown funk and thinking out loud. The showcase was composed of pieces from rallies and original pieces created by student directors. They also had special guest performances, Paradigm, UBO, and Footworks DC alumni. We saw tons of spirit from Valley as our student body attended the showcase to support friends and family with their Valley pride. It was truly a great show with outstanding performances. On March 17 and 18, sophomores prepared themselves to take - take the KC. Our class of 2017 surely wasn't excited to take the exams, but were ready and willing to do their best on their test to ensure their walk across the stage. We would like to congratulate a few select boys on our VHS wrestling team for making it to the Master League Championship Tournament. Kristin Sanchez, Edgar Mercado, and Bilal Baloche all made it to the tournament and placed in the top 10. Our boys did an amazing job, and we congratulate all of them and - all of them and our wrestling team for a great season. Although our pace has slowed down from the beginning of the year, we still have some upcoming events that we would like you to be a part of. On May 13, we will be holding our Senior Parent Potluck, which features the announcing of our 17 Silver Viking students. On the - our ninth annual Health Tech Fair is also coming up on May 15. We are very excited for you to attend. The fair will show off the talents of our students and help us save future lives as well. We would also like to invite all of you to our Senior Goodbye Rally on May 22. We're looking forward to seeing all of you there. This has been our last report. We have greatly enjoyed sharing with you all our events for - in the past year at Valley. We thank you as always for your time and wish you all a wonderful end of the year. Good night.
All right. Great job. I'd like to recognize our wonderful principals, Ms. Jenna Durham, principal of Monterey Trail High School, and of course, Ms. Chelsea Bowler Shelton of Valley High School. All right, students, you may be dismissed. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have requests for student expulsions. I would like to ask if anyone wishes to address the Board in closed session regarding a student expulsion recommendation. Seeing none, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the request for student expulsions.
I'll move it.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? Okay, very good. Moving on, next, we are going to do something a little out of order. I'd like to announce that item number 10 is being moved forward, National School Library Week Resolution, and call on Mr. Mark Saruti to present. Or Ms. - well, it says Mark Saruti or Ms. Penna.
Thank you, Ms. St. Allen, members of the Board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Heine. Tonight, I ask the Board to approve a resolution proclaiming April 12 through 18 as National School Library Week. It is essential to acknowledge the valuable contributions of all who work in our school libraries, including the teacher librarians, library technicians, and others who make library services possible for our students. National Library Week is celebrated annually in the month of April. Libraries host special events to highlight the unique roles that libraries play in people's lives. This year, the theme for National Library Week is Unlimited Possibilities at Your Library. This evening, we ask that special recognition be extended to our school libraries during this week of April 12 through 18. And I have a protocol question. I'm delighted tonight to ask two of our teacher librarians at the secondary level to come forward and to provide you with a presentation. And we also have other school librarians, teacher librarians, who are here tonight to listen to the report and also to be recognized. So would you like to take action on the resolution first, or would you like to hear the report first?
Let's hear the report.
Wonderful. Then it is my great pleasure to ask to come forward Ms. Annette Klein, teacher librarian at Monterey Trail High School, and Ms. Karen Ledford, teacher librarian at Sheldon High School.
How close do we have to get to you? Are you sure I'm positive? Hi. Now, my contacts are acting up, so if I have to do like this every now and then, help me out. A couple of years ago, one of our district administrators was visiting a university campus where they were building a brand-new, state-of-the-art library. The woman with her turned and said, "Are they still building those?" The answer is a resounding yes. In fact, in fact, libraries are more important in this explosive age of technology and explosive age of information. The modern school library has evolved along with education and is a vital center for 21st century learning and technology. Our school library vision draws its core beliefs from our district's mission statement and core beliefs, along with the American Association of School Libraries' common beliefs. It's the goal of teacher librarians to help prepare all of our students to apply literacy skills and technologies in the advanced world that we're sending our children into. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening. To achieve our vision, library media teachers collaborate with colleagues to offer high-quality instruction and services that support student achievement. Our objective is to teach students how to access, evaluate, use, and integrate information in an ethical manner resulting in a creative and functional product. To that end, teacher librarians offer a library program that provides access to resources in the library and at home, a program that provides direct instruction in 21st century skills, a program that presents instruction in the effective, responsible, and ethical use of technology, and assists classroom teachers in developing curriculum and in selecting resources, a program that respects the diversity of our school community by providing access to culturally rich and ethically diverse resources, fosters critical and creative thinking through a variety of formats, and encourages reading for enjoyment, a program that is supported by technical support staff and led by a credentialed librarian who serves the school site as an instructional leader in research and technology. Thank you for restoring the position of secondary library technicians. Because technology and education are ever-changing, the vision of our school libraries is dynamic and evolving. We will revisit this vision yearly with our recently-formed Library Steering Committee to monitor our progress and to set new goals that assure consistent student success across all secondary libraries in acquiring information literacy skills that prepare them for college and careers. We look forward to providing you with an update next year on our accomplishments, and we are now able to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Penna, were there other speakers? Okay, very good. Any comments from the Board? All right, well, I just would like to make a couple of comments. Thank you again for your presentation, and, you know, we really value all of the great work that you do, and you are truly instrumental in the success of our students. And it is wonderful to see those positions restored, so thank you. Thank you for all that you do. At this time, I would like to call for a motion to adopt Resolution Number 56, 2014-15, proclaiming the week of April 12 through 18, 2015, as National School Library Week. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? Very good. Thank you.
And we'd also like to take a moment to introduce the teacher librarians who are here.
Wonderful.
And I think that Ms. Pinkerton is going to take a picture. Also assisting this evening, Ms. Audrey Conway, who is our teacher librarian from James Rutter Middle School. And if everyone in the back would come forward, please.
Come on up.
We have Ms. Karen Meyer from Samuel Jackman Middle School. We have Ms. Margaret Hoagland from Florin High School. We have Ms. Sally White from Edward Harris Junior Middle School. We have Ms. Linda Kennedy from Katherine Albionni Middle School.
Thank you so much for all that you do in our schools.
We have Ms. Trudy Summers from Toby Johnson Middle School.
And now, I'm pretty sure it's Mr. Mark Saruti for our LCAP update.
We have Ms. Wendy Mural from Elizabeth Pinkerton Middle School. And we have Ms. Danielle Van Summeren from Pleasant Grove High School.
Good evening, President St. Allen, members of the Board, Superintendent Hoffman, and
And at this time, I'll introduce Ms. Fozia Kevell, and she will introduce you to the elementary librarians.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, we have two library technicians here representing the 39 elementary library techs, and they are Jamie Carroll from Mary Sukamoto - please come up - and Maria Ramirez from Prairie Elementary.
Ms. Heine.
All right.
We appreciate - always appreciate the opportunity to share with the Board, provide information, and gather feedback regarding our LCAP process. This evening, what we would like to do is there are six - six components of our discussion and presentation this evening. We'll look at the integration of the LCAP with our district's learning vision, our strategic goals and objectives. We'll look at the process and make sure that the Board and our community members are aware of the updated state LCAP regulations. We'll talk a little bit about data analysis and how data is used, both in terms of programmatic data, student data, the timing of it, and when those - when those metrics are gathered and - just to make sure that the Board and everyone is aware of the sequencing of our data analysis processes. Stakeholder feedback, we've been keeping the Board updated on that, but we'll be able to provide even further detail. And from that process, the emerging common priorities. And then we'll remind the Board and also the community of our three additional upcoming planning sessions and workshops or work sessions that we have with the Board related to our budgeting process and our LCAP development process. And of course, I'm always pleased to be joined this evening by two of my folks that I'm privileged to be able to have an opportunity to work with. Ms. Lowery will be sharing a portion of this related to LCAP processes, and she's the perfect person to do it. She's been at the ground level since the onset of the LCAP process in really formulating a lot of the baseline processes that we have, and also the integration of our site LCAPs with our district LCAP. And I'll let her discuss more of that, but again, I just point that out because it is a huge advantage that our district has in securing global information, global meaning the global perspective of our - of our Elk Grove community and gathering that feedback. And then Christine Akito, who is our director-
Very good. Thank you.
And we'd also like to take a moment to introduce the teacher librarians who are here.
Wonderful.
And I think that Ms. Pinkerton is going to take a picture. Also assisting this evening, Ms. Audrey Conway, who is our teacher librarian from James Rutter Middle School. And if everyone in the back would come forward, please.
Come on up.
We have Ms. Karen Meyer from Samuel Jackman Middle School.
Thank you so much for all that you do in our schools.
We have Ms. Margaret Hoagland from Florin High School.
And now, I'm pretty sure it's Mr. Mark Sarudi for our LCAP update.
We have Ms. Sally White from Edward Harris Jr. Middle School. We have Ms. Linda Kennedy from Katherine Albionni Middle School.
Good evening, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman,
We have Ms. Trudy Summers from Toby Johnson Middle School. We have Ms. Wendy Mural from Elizabeth Pinkerton Middle School. And we have Ms. Danielle Van Summeren from Pleasant Grove High School. And at this time, I'll introduce Ms. Fozia Kevell, and she will introduce you to the elementary librarians.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, we have two library tacticians here representing the 39 elementary library
and Ms. Heine.
tacks, and they are Jamie Carroll from Mary Sukamoto.
We appreciate, always appreciate, the opportunity to share with the board, provide information,
Please come up. And Maria Ramirez from Prairie Elementary.
and gather feedback regarding our LCAP process.
All right.
This evening, what we would like to do is, there are six components of our discussion and presentation this evening. We'll look at the integration of the LCAP with our district's learning vision, our strategic goals and objectives. We'll look at the process and make sure that the board and our community members are aware of the updated state LCAP regulations. We'll talk a little bit about data analysis and how data is used, both in terms of programmatic data, student data, the timing of it, and when those metrics are gathered, and just to make sure that the board and everyone is aware of the sequencing of our data analysis processes. Stakeholder feedback, we've been keeping the board updated on that, but we'll be able to provide even further detail. And from that process, the emerging common priorities, and then we'll remind the board and also the community of our three additional upcoming planning sessions and workshops, or work sessions that we have with the board related to our budgeting process and our LCAP development process. And, of course, I'm always pleased to be joined this evening by two of my folks that I'm privileged to be able to have an opportunity to work with. Ms. Lowery will be sharing a portion of this related to LCAP processes, and she's the perfect person to do it. She's been at the ground level since the onset of the LCAP process in really formulating a lot of the baseline processes that we have, and also the integration of our site LCAPs with our district LCAP. And I'll let her discuss more of that, but again, I just point that out because it is a huge advantage that our district has in securing global information, global meaning the global perspective of our Elk Grove community and gathering that feedback. And then Christine Akito, who is our Director of Research and Evaluation, who does a fantastic job of managing data throughout the district, but really will be integral of heading up a group on an ongoing basis that will be looking at the management of our LCAP data. And so, we always start our work in looking at E4, and I just want to point out some things that, it's not new, but it is grounding our work, and that is, our ultimate goal is that center, that learning vision of every student learning in every classroom and every subject every day, and that our kids are college and career-ready upon graduation. And so, that really is the work that we're doing each and every day, whether that is our custodians, whether that is our classified staff, as we saw, our librarians and library techs, our teachers in the classrooms, folks at the district office. It's a collective effort to work toward that common learning vision. Those four core elements, or we refer to them as foundation elements of E4, are what derived our strategic goals, and then those surrounding elements, if all of those aspects of that model are healthy and in shape, we'll be able to achieve that learning vision, and that's ultimately what we're working on each and every day. Just to remind folks of our four strategic LCAP goals, we aligned those again to E4, so we're looking at the teaching and learning component of our LCAP. We're looking at the assessment of students and programs, a comprehensive, we're working very collaboratively, actually, with our EGEA colleagues and leadership on some initial work related to the development of a comprehensive assessment system that goes beyond simply academic assessment and also incorporates health and wellness assessments, special education assessments, captures really our strategy and how we're looking systematically at student assessment, but also programmatic. The wellness component is crucial, a lot of our PBIS efforts across the district, but really ensuring that our kids are socially and emotionally healthy and safe in our schools. Without that, learning won't occur, so we're looking at all those activities and initiatives connected to that. And lastly, but not at all leastly, our parent, family, and community partnerships, in that the only way that we'll be able to ensure that all of our kids are successful in learning in every classroom and every subject every day is if we are having meaningful and ongoing deepening engagement with our community and family partners. This isn't intended to be read by folks in the audience, it's just, we look at that, and anyone who wants a copy of that, the reason I put that up is really to look at it in terms of, and just to remind folks, LCFF and LCAP, one way to look at that and describe that is in terms of inputs, outputs, and outcomes. And the LCFF, the funding formula, that's the funding that is available as an input to be able to enable us to provide outputs, which are the programs and services that produce the outcomes. And the LCAP is the document that captures not every single expenditure that a district has. It's not, that's not what it's intended to do. It's intended to focus on the primary initiatives that we have that captures the essence of our district and how we're attempting to ensure that all of our students, as well as targeted subgroups of students, are achieving at a high level. At this point, what I'm going to do is turn it over to Ms. Lowery, who's going to walk folks through some of the components of the LCAP in terms of process and procedure. Ms. Lowery.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Elk Grove, along with every other district in California, is responsible each year for creating and adopting an LCAP and also an annual update each year that aligns with the district's budget and multi-year budget projections that Mr. Sarudi just explained. And essentially, this three-year plan should define our district's overall vision, all of its actions, our plans to address state and local priorities, ultimately for student success. And that's what our LCAP is doing right now. It should resemble the type of information that's contained in a strategic plan, but really, the emphasis is, this document should share our story in Elk Grove about how we plan to achieve our mission and our vision for our kids and for our families. And, you know, as Mr. Sarudi said, it doesn't include all of our budgetary information, but it does include LCFF funds, and it can include other funds if that information is Another idea centered around LCAP is that, you know, this bill was, LCFF was the governor's flagship bill, and essentially, you know, the main goal was really to increase transparency and accountability, and LCAP does that for LCFF. It should connect the resources to the goals that are aligned to the eight state priorities as defined by our state, and essentially, expand community engagement in that process. The LCAP must include, as prescribed in the bill, goals that are consistent with strategies and school site plans. That was further clarified in November. We're going to talk a little bit about that in a couple of minutes, but those are aligned to the eight state priorities for all students in our district. Also, an analysis of student achievement and the progress made in implementing all those goals that we have identified in each prior-year plan. Also, the cost of implementing all of those actions and strategies. Throughout the time that we've been involved in LCAP in our district, we have been designing, creating this process of development that includes engagement and consultation of all of our stakeholders. And this year, we really set out to embark upon a process that would engage stakeholders that are traditionally not represented, such as our community members or even advocates for some of the identified groups in the state plan. Just to give you a little bit of a legislative update, the Board of Education adopted the permanent LCFF spending regulations and the revised LCAP template on November 14th. The OAL Office adopted those as well on January 8th. And essentially, you know, there were a lot of changes in the plan, but really, most importantly, there were a lot of clarifications. And I'd like to highlight a couple of those this evening. Centered around the state priorities, I believe we sent those to all of you. If you have any questions, just let Mr. Sarudi or I know, and we'd be happy to explain. But a few of the really key ideas centered around those changes are, with respect to the state priorities, particularly state priority number three, districts are to now really seek the input from parents at the district and the school site level. That was a huge clarification for us and something that we are definitely working on here in Elk Grove. As you know, that our school site plans are aligned with our district LCAP, and the process of engagement that we're using at the district is similar to one that we're using at the school site. And Mr. Sarudi will bring about further clarification of that in a short while. Also, with regard to stakeholder engagement, there was a huge clarification centered around the consultation versus the engagement of stakeholders. And essentially, how does that consultation contribute to the development of the LCAP and the annual update itself? In Sections Two and Three, which were the old template, those tables were combined into one section to provide more clarity, but essentially, the content is still the same. And then, finally, the annual update section was added to include progress made towards outcomes for each individual goal written in the LCAP itself. If we take a look at this next slide, it demonstrates, you know, the life cycle of our LCAP here in Elk Grove, which is similar to a lot of other districts. But really, what I'd like to highlight in this slide is that, at every stage or every phase throughout our process of development, we are constantly consulting with stakeholders, as you see that present in each quarter. What I'd like to highlight here is a little bit about the school site plans being aligned with our district LCAP. One way that we are really digging into that work is to ensure that school site-level advisory groups, that their ideas are being considered at the school site level, and that we're hearing what that sounds like and looks like here at the district level, so that we can inform from those school plans our district plans, which is essentially the intent of the law. And we're looking, of course, at English learner advisories, school site councils, student advisories, those kinds of groups at our school sites. With this slide, what we like to point out is that, in this first year that we are embarking upon submitting an update in our LCAP, this is the first year of benchmark data, and we aren't essentially measuring progress, as you can see on this slide, but we are updating our needs assessment, we're taking a look at all of our 1314 data, and trying to determine what is it that our students need, what actions and services is it going to take to meet those needs. And those are some of the requirements that we will be reporting on in our metrics for this year. But in each subsequent year that we will do an update with each LCAP that we submit, as you can see, we'll be measuring the progress of the year before. Looking at the engagement of stakeholders, as I stated earlier, one of the clarifications or changes that was made back in November was this idea of consulting with stakeholders, and then going through what we call a review and comment phase. And we know that by law, we must present the LCAP to a district parent advisory and to a district English learner committee. In our district, Mr. Hoffman is really, really digging in and encouraging all of us, and has really made the stand that we don't just want to present our LCAP to those groups to elicit feedback, we want to elicit feedback from all of our stakeholders, and so that's how all of our meetings will go with all of our stakeholders. We will be presenting the LCAP to each stakeholder group in the same way that we do to our parent advisory and to our DLEC group. And finally, just to further clarify this idea of consultation, we should be involving all of our stakeholders. That includes teachers, principals, administrators, other school personnel, all of our local bargaining, comrades, parents, students, community members, even folks in our schools that live next door to our schools that don't have children are stakeholders, and those are our untraditional-represented stakeholders that we want to reach out, that we're encouraging schools to reach out to. Everyone pays taxes, correct? Everyone has a vested interest in our schools. And so, when we look at this slide here, it just identifies the legal requirement in terms of who gets to review and comment on the LCAP. But as I stated earlier, Mr. Hoffman is really encouraging us to present that to each of our stakeholder groups. And finally, when we look at levels of engagement as required by the statute in the law, essentially, we are moving from consultation to review and comment, and then allowing the public to have an opportunity to still weigh in after all of that consulting and presenting and the offering of feedback from our stakeholders. Public still has an opportunity to provide written comment and to have a final public hearing before we move forward to adoption and a submittal and posting of the LCAP to SCOWIE, and then, once again, on our district's website. Thank you. Christine will come down.
Can you push it to the next one? Okay. An important piece of our LCAP process is the data review, and we use data to make informed decisions. In our district, we do this on an ongoing basis already, so this ties nicely with the LCAP-required processes, where we are to annually assess our needs, assess our programs, and adjust the programs or the implementation of the program, and then, again, evaluate our process on a cyclical basis. Currently, for the 1415 LCAP cycle, we are in the stage where we are reviewing trend data through the 1314 school year to update our needs assessment and revise our goals and actions, if needed, for this current LCAP that we are reviewing and submitting. And then, at the end of the school year, the 1415 data will become available, and then we will be reviewing the 1415 data and revising LCAP goals based on the 1415 progress, and that is part of next year's LCAP cycle. We are required to include data in the eight specified state priority areas that were mentioned before, but within those eight priorities, there are additional 20 or so distinct outcome measures under those. And in addition to the state-specified areas, the district may include additional goals, which we did, and we are now obligated to capture and report out on these. We're required to include overall student results, as well as each of those outcome measures by focused subgroups, like English learners, socio-economically disadvantaged, and foster youth. And in our district, we always provide outcome measures by each of the ethnicities, and we provide results for the most recent three years, so that we can always review our results over time, look at trend data. This is a list of all of the outcome measures that are specified in our LCAP, and these encompass the required state metrics, as well as the additional outcome measures that we have identified in our district LCAP. Right now, these are organized by the four strategic goals in our LCAP, and these are outcome measures that we are going to be tracking and reviewing on an annual review cycle for LCAP. And most of these measures are things that we already are looking at on an ongoing basis. We regularly report out to our board and the school and on all of these, a lot of these measures, as we get new data for the year or the semester, or as we receive results throughout the year. For example, every time we get KC updates, we send that out to the board and to school sites. Our sites get this data on an ongoing basis, too, throughout the year, but we also compile these into one comprehensive packet annually, similar to the format that we provided to the board, but for their school and for all of their subgroups. And the latest packet that we provided to you was all the latest data we have up to date, which is up through the 1314 school year. And once we have all the data for the 1415 school year, we'll compile the same data packet again in the fall and provide that for the district, as well as all of the schools. And we share these outcome measures with various stakeholders throughout the year, and as we gather input from stakeholders for this review process or the LCAP development and revision process. We don't share out all the measures with all the subgroups, it would take a long time, but we just, we pick and choose outcome measures that we think various stakeholders might be most interested in. And you receive the packet for the district, and you might have noticed that there are some measures that we have not yet reported on, and those are in a development stage for us. For example, the state requires that we have measures of school connectedness, so this year, we have gone through the process of planning what our data collection will be, and we have plans for data collection next year. And in addition, some of our existing data collections, such as our parent survey, we're revising some of the items to capture some of the state measures through a parent perspective on student connectedness, for example.
Thank you, Christine. And so, we'd like to finish up, going back and taking a look at something that folks have seen before. So stakeholder feedback, and where we're gathering all the information, and the thing that, for effect, I thought I'd bring, as you've heard, we gather feedback from the variety of committees and groups that we currently have in place. The other key component to this is our alignment with the site LCAP development process. And this gives you an idea of every single piece of paper, we gather every single thing, and it's all right here collectively. And so, this is what, in a couple of slides, we'll get down as we're looking at emerging themes that are coming through. So I just want to point out, we keep every single sheet of paper, and I'll reference in just a second how we, as a collective group, have begun to identify the emerging themes and common interests. These are meetings that have been completed, and if anyone thinks that the process is completed, well, those are more meetings that are coming up, so we're continuing to have many, many meetings. And as Sanjay indicated, we're going to start moving from consultation to feedback, because over the next few weeks, we're optimistic that you, as a board, will be able to use the input that's been gathered collectively across our community and recommendations that are coming from the cabinet and our superintendent, in order for you, as a board, to make budgetary and programmatic and service decisions. And then, once we have those, we'll be working to update the LCAP, our new LCAP, and we'll be getting that out, so that folks can be able to take a look at that draft LCAP and provide feedback on that. So just wanted to show folks the commonality of a blank form, but this is what we've been using. So what that is, and again, for folks in the audience, I realize that it could be, the print is small, but what that's getting at is it's identifying programs and services, and then it's starting to identify the key stakeholders or targeted student subgroups, but it also aligns it to our strategic goals, our LCAP objectives. It requires an expectation of outcomes, and then it talks about expected and planned projected costs. And so, this is what we are having every one of our groups com- themes that are coming through. So I just want to point out, we keep every single sheet of paper. And I'll reference in just a second how we, as a collective group, have begun to identify the emerging themes and common interests. These are meetings that have been completed, and if anyone thinks that the process is completed, well, those are more meetings that are coming up. So we're continuing to have many, many meetings. And as Sanjay indicated, we're going to start moving from consultation to feedback because over the next few weeks, we're optimistic that you, as a board, will be able to use the input that's been gathered collectively across our community and recommendations that are coming from the cabinet and our superintendent in order for you, as a board, to make budgetary and programmatic and service decisions. And then, once we have those, we'll be working to update the LCAP, our new LCAP, and we'll be getting that out so that folks can be able to take a look at that draft LCAP and provide feedback on that. So just wanted to show folks the commonality of a blank form, but this is what we've been using. So what that is, and again, for folks in the audience, I realize that it could be, the print is small, but what that's getting at is it's identifying programs and services, and then it's starting to identify the key stakeholders or targeted student subgroups. But it also aligns it to our strategic goals, our LCAP objectives. It requires an expectation of outcomes, and then it talks about expected and planned projected costs. And so this is what we are having every one of our groups complete. And now in terms of the emerging themes, we've had the process to get to this, again, all of this collective information. I worked with a small group to do an initial blush, brought it to cabinet so that cabinet wasn't just looking at, well, this is what I, as an individual, looked at in sorting through this. We actually have a single document that captures every single response that we've gathered. That's what was brought to cabinet. So it was some quiet time for about 20 minutes or so as people were paging through that. But the reason for doing that is because what came out of that was more eyes to look at that and people saying, well, I actually see another theme that emerged. And so just wanted to share with folks that it's not only been a comprehensive approach of gathering the information, but we want to be very authentic and open and inclusive in terms of what we've identified as emerging themes. So the emerging themes, instructional support and all those areas of instructional support, obviously, and these aren't necessarily in order of priority of from most frequently cited to least frequently cited. Parent and family engagement, extended learning, and what that's really getting at is before, after school, throughout the school year, intercession for our year-round schools, summer school, et cetera. EL support in all those areas, increased transportation, increased academic counseling, increased behavioral support. So this was all tied to the ongoing enhancement of our PBIS efforts and the efforts across the district we have regarding social emotional learning. Facilities and learning environments were something that was frequently cited. Expanded college and career preparation and the linked learning initiative that we have was cited. Professional learning was very frequently cited. Technology support. And then educational equity focused on efforts to reduce and eliminate the achievement gap. Those were the common areas. Now, one of the things that's important for the board and us as an educational organization is to take these and reflect back and walk back through the eight state priorities, our four strategic goals, and our LCAP objectives. And the good news is that you see a direct alignment because none of this is intended to be static. So this document is a real crucial piece for us as the board is continuing to make decisions and determine what priorities are. Because as we all know, while the economic forecast is certainly much better than it was in years, in recent years past, demand is going to exceed supply. So in order to make prioritized decisions and informed decisions, we provide this for the board. The one question that I'm going to ask in just a second is really asking the board because the upcoming, the last slide is the upcoming sessions. So tonight, the expectation was to further ground the board in the LCAP process, the process we've used to very comprehensively gather feedback and input from our constituents. But I want to say, if you ask me if it's perfect, the answer is no. We'll never be satisfied with that. In fact, we've got a committee that's been established, and we have board members that are represented on that committee that are specifically looking at the process we use. On the 14th is where we will be looking at further making sure that the board is in agreement with and we're all understanding what those areas of interest and primary area of interest is and are. And then beginning to look at what the superintendent will bring forward, work that we're doing in the cabinet to bring our recommendations to the board for your consideration and ultimately so you can begin making prioritized decisions for the 1516 school year and making determinations of whether or not those are based on one-time funding decisions or ongoing funding. And then we've got the two other meetings, our next board meeting on the 21st and then a workshop again on the 22nd with our goal being, ideally, we'd be able to walk away with that, and then it would be myself and a few of our folks who are going to be frantically writing, updating the LCAP. And there won't be significant changes to the LCAP because the goals remain, but ultimately, if there are programmatic decisions, we begin to weave those into the LCAP document. So that kind of gives folks an idea of the structure where we want to go and what we see ourselves doing over the next, it's going to be a busy month of April. And so with that, we will take any questions or comments that the board may have.
Excellent. I think we probably have a lot more in our board packet. There's like another 40 pages here. So I will turn it over for board comments and questions. We'll start with Ms. Titus Espinosa.
Just a comment, not a question, given all that wonderful background that we have verbally and in writing. I just want to commend you and thank you for going above and beyond the call when it comes to outreach and, you know, genuinely soliciting input from all of our stakeholders and community members and just keep up the good work. It looks like you will have indeed a very busy April, but can't wait to see what comes out of that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Mr. Fortina.
Thank you. I have quite a few. I think goes without saying, Mark, that you know that I am just totally indebted to you and your staff for all the work you've done with respect to LCFF and LCAP, LCAP in particular. First comment, and I make it as a general comment in recognition of all the quality work we do, and I've made this comment before, that I believe Elk Grove Unified School District does an exemplary job with respect to what it provides to students. Does that mean we can't do things differently? No, but we do, we do a heck of a job. But there is, there is a point that there must be realization about. And to me, that is, at the end of the day, they go home, children go home to the same environment. There's only so much that can be accomplished during the school day. And one thing we've done in the last several years, and at times it's caused me consternation, is that as we add program, that program is funded through dollars that come from the general fund. Each dollar you reduce from the general fund, you take away from the regular classroom. And it provides the classroom teacher less of an ability to address other children in the class via the slow learners, very, very big percentage of our kids, gate students, and other areas. So I just think we need to be cognizant of the fact that as we focus continually on certain groups, there are other groups that we don't put as much time in on, and dollars that are taken out of their classroom restrict people's ability to serve them. Can we go to page 21?
It's the one that says emerging common interest priorities. Because board members may have another 21 later in the packet.
Okay. As we get into our discussions in the coming meetings and as you present proposals for our discussion and consideration.
Yes, sir.
Will those areas be expanded on with respect to the tenets of the comment? Because, you know, parent family engagement, been battered about probably for the last hundred years, we've done it ourselves. What does that mean? And one of the things that we've already discussed, a lot of the ongoing expenditures, which I presume are going to come forward again for our consideration, you have not yet had the ability to get total data on. The data is going to be incomplete with respect to whether or not we met the targets, whether or not we met the goals, whether or not we need to make adjustments, and so on and so forth. So as they come forward, a lot will be best guess because hard data, and I know you've collected data and you continually analyze data as you go along. I don't dismiss that fact, but the final analysis isn't going to be there. So will we get, with respect to each of the items on this sheet, more information that we can use to consider from a board perspective whether or not we would see the need to enhance expenditures, reduce expenditures, add, you know, whatever? Are we going to get that?
So a couple of pieces related to that is you raise a very important point, and I won't scroll all the way back, but the E4 graphic, that infograph that goes up there, as we use that, that can be extremely meaningful or frankly, it can be meaningless. It's not meaningless, but it could be if those terms aren't commonly understood. So parent, family, and community engagement, that's partnerships, that's one of the central, that's a core element. So it is critical that what we, as a district and as an organization, do is to make sure that that's defined because that could mean different things to different people. And so any recommendation that comes for a program or service recommendation that comes from the superintendent's office and from cabinet will be accompanied with a rationale and what it's aligned to and why we're making those. And out of that, for example, could come, maybe there is, maybe there's a need for us as a district to make sure that we understand completely what the structure and framework of that actually is. And that's why we're putting resources toward it is so that we can clearly understand that when we say it, it means these three, five, or seven things. It doesn't mean whatever to any individual who's thinking about it. So in essence, education, even if you talk about effective instruction, it can be a very elusive thing. And you've been in the education game for a long time, so you know exactly what I'm talking about. I can assure the board that any recommendation that is coming and any questions that you have, you'll have everybody there to be able to respond with additional clarification, and there will be an absolute connection between any program or service and expenditure, and it'll be folded right back into, is targeted to these students. Here's our expected measures, and here's exactly what it's aligned to in terms of the eight state priorities, our goals, and our objectives.
You know, piggybacking on the comment you just made relative to parent engagement and involvement, we had put resources towards that last year, the board did, in recognition of a variety of needs.
Yes.
And I have attended a number of parent programs put on by schools, and those schools have provided notification. Those schools have listed on their website. Those schools have had drawing incentives to try to encourage people to come. Those schools have provided childcare. Those schools have tinkered with both daytime and nighttime, meeting time. Teachers have made the direct contact, and a lot of people don't show up. So I'm going to, one, be hard pressed to say, boy, we ought to throw more money at this because my experience is that the people responsible have done a hell of a job. And I even have to question, what more can you do other than go and pick them, people up at their houses and bring them? What more would we do? You see, I get taken aback a lot of times that I don't believe we get credit for or recognition for the things that we do do because we do a lot. You know, when we look at eliminating or decreasing the achievement gap, another topic, been around a thousand years. Build-A-Bond was doing a great job already with that. But the mere fact that children don't come to school and we have the statistics, you can't learn if you're not at school. Ms. Titus Espinosa had a posting today on Facebook. You're not going to learn to read if no one reads to you at home and works with you. So, you know, do we do a great job? Boy, to me, hands down, we do a great job. Can we do more? Probably. But we can't do it alone. And so as we look at additional expenditures as we move forward, the one thing I will be looking for certainly, and I know you will provide it because you believe in the decision-making model as much as I do, probably more, you're doing it every day, is how are we going to know if we get there? That'll be a big thing. Thank you.
Excellent comments, Mr. Fortina. Any other colleagues?
Put him.
Mr. Madison.
Yeah, I just, first of all, I want to thank you for the good report, a lot of details and a lot of things to look forward to and something that's relatively new to the educational processes that we're going through right now. One of my concerns when we get, we're leaning towards the local control funding formula, we talk about the dollars, just to go along with some of my colleagues and what they're You know, we look at the concentration levels of certain districts that are higher than others. Our district is not in the lead point of California as a concentration district, but we do have a lot of pockets of highly-need students there. And I think one point in the governor's office and the state level meetings that I have attended, there's a lot of controversy that there was not enough specific requirements by the state. You've probably heard that a little bit. But they're leaving it to the LEAs or the districts to make the right decisions. Yeah, we don't get parental involvement. There's a lot of kids that come from very depressed areas. I'm very familiar with it. I came out of one myself. It is something that, as board members in the district and the data that was talked about that we're going to gather on our subgroups, this is where we have to make the move to help these children. Yeah, they're not with us 24 hours a day, but we can still make an impact. And I'm looking for where our dollars are put towards that area of kids that are in need. It doesn't take a rocket science. I go around, all around this district, and I can tell you the ones that are struggling, that are hungry, that are coming to school. And that's where our dollars need to go if we're going to help a lot of these children there. So right now, I'm going to rest my case on that, but I just want to bring that forward. And I think the governor and State Board of Education, I somewhat agree with, they're leaving it to our hands to really make a difference in these kids, where this money's going to go. And I think it can make a difference in a lot of kids' lives. I don't want to pretend to sit here and say we can save every, every one of them, but I think as a year's progress, we can certainly show tremendous results from a lot of these kids that are in highly need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Mr. Prez.
On page 16, it says, needs assessment, school sites. When are those going to be done on all the schools?
The needs assessment, that's, that's, that's part of the LCAP development process that our sites have been going through. So they've actually been engaged and involved in that process. And Sanjay, the actual site LCAPs are due?
On the 30th.
On the 30th.
30th what month?
April, April 30th. And so there are, there are some schools that have completed the process, and there are others that are currently engaged and involved in that process.
On page 16, can you actually list the subgroups, the low-income students, English-language learners, and foster youth, instead of saying subgroups?
We certainly could, when we can, sure.
On page 17, the API schools that are not, are fourth or fifth year of, are they listed? Are they? How are you going to, how are you going to do those, how are you going to work with those outcomes?
I just want to make sure I understand the question.
You know, we have low-performance schools, the APIs, so they're maybe second, third, or fourth year, fifth year. I understand a couple of them. How are we going to improve those outcomes and what outcomes are presently doing for those schools? Are they very similar to the LCAP?
And so I just want to make sure, when you're using the term API, are you referring to our program improvement schools?
Yes.
And so we'll continue, program improvement will remain, remains the same, remains unchanged. Those are federal dollars that are attached to those schools. And so those regulations were unchanged by the LCAP process. So we continue to work and continue to support directly those schools. And so if schools are in, going through and moving from year three to year four, year four to year five, and are moving in and going through that, that's headed up by two of our divisions within education services, and that's a lot of the work that Ms. Lowry and her department does. Certainly Christine supports them with data. And then elementary education, we partner directly with them. And we'll continue to work with those schools under a continuous improvement model and turn over every stone in terms of instructional practice and before-school, after-school programs to best meet those kids' needs and ultimately improve student achievement.
Currently, I can help a little too, is that process, the whole no child left behind piece was supposed to be reauthorized, that hasn't happened. So there is- So, there is a kind of a stop on moving forward into program improvement based on the federal measures right now, because most of those federal measures aren't being used any longer. And the state has requested and extended, and granted the opportunity to hold where they are with the current PI status. Their Secretary Duncan actually came out with a communication this week that stated that he was hopeful that there was actually some momentum again at the federal level to do the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind. But right now, we're kind of stuck with a, an antiquated system that's already run its course, and we're waiting for a new set of directions from the feds, but we just haven't received that yet.
But, but I don't see very much difference between the federal outcomes of what they're doing through the, you know, No Child Left Behind and LCAP. They're almost the same targeted students, the same English language learners, low achievement. So...
That was probably the best thing that came out of No Child Left Behind, was the disaggregation of data and the actual focus on individual student groups, instead of getting lost in averages of all kids. And of all the things that No Child Left Behind did, that it did very well. And so, that, that concept is moving forward with the new version of the API, which the state will be coming forward with, probably, was probably another year and a half away from that actually becoming implemented. But moving forward, those are the things that came out of No Child Left Behind that I think we'll live on. But the sanctions and all the other processes put in place, where there's more punishments than there are recognitions and supports to move schools forward, I think that's going to move away.
So, okay, next question, this form you have on page 20, is each school going to have feedback? We're going to have a list or feedback from each elementary school, junior high and high school?
Yeah, we'll actually have two...
Continuation charter?
Yeah, we actually have two different sources. So, literally in here, there are copies, they're not copies, there's, there's a form right here that all of our sites submitted, some of our sites didn't, there was, there were a few that actually, if they'd already submitted their site LCAP plan, we didn't have them complete one of these. So, that's exactly what we will have, is we'll have information from every, every single school, we'll have it in addition to this, the majority of them, actually, we had them fill this out, because we wanted, we wanted to get that information in advance so that we're able to begin to work with you in terms of the common themes. But on the end of this month, we're going to have a detailed plan from every single school site that gets down to the detailed level, what each and every school is doing. And that's where we look for, to ensure that the alignment, because it isn't, the language that's in the law makes it very clear that the district's plan should align to site plans. So, that's the advantage that we have as a district of having four strategic goals and a, and a learning system with a learning vision that, for several years now, has been guiding the direction that our schools are going. And Ms. Cherry and Ms. Penna, in their leadership and working with their site administrators, have maintained a keen focus on some areas that we've been focusing on for a number of years. And so, while it's, I really view it as a cyclical process versus a linear process in that we've got district-wide goals that are broad in scope, that allow considerable flexibility with regard to schools having different circumstances and conditions. They develop their plans, we look at their plans, we make sure that they're aligned to those goals, we see common themes and ideas that are emerging, if best practices are emerging, we look at how we can start to move those more comprehensively and broadly across the district.
What is the plan of action for parent, family engagement in schools in which there's no shows to these meetings?
Well, I'd hate to speak for each individual school. I could put my principal's hat back on and say that in two different states and in two very, very, actually, in three very, very different schools, it's always a challenge. But I believe what you'll see emerging through some of the recommendations that we have is that there's, there's two things, and that is that there are good things and good practices that are taking place. It is a challenge, we don't necessarily want to cut the legs out from underneath some good programs, so to speak, but we, we do see where there may be benefit in making sure that we have a common understanding and framework of what that is. There's something, for example, through the California Department of Education, that has the parent engagement framework, and it begins to lay out some structures by which you can begin to not just talk about an elusive concept, but it really has, it's, it contains these key elements, and then you can begin to start looking at, and what are best practices that fall within those. And actually, we use that, when we pushed that $300,000 out, when the board approved the $300,000 last year, we looked at the research, we used that document that literally was identifying a correlation coefficient to best practices, saying, if you do this with parents, it can have this likelihood and this probability of positively impacting student achievement. And we required that the school sites, Ms. Cherry and Ms. Penna said, a majority of those monies needed to be used in those, utilizing those strategies that are showing the, research-based strategies that are showing the highest likelihood of return on investment in terms of student achievement. And so, that's what you'll find, that's what you'll see coming, is, I frankly do believe that an area that we have as a district and as an organization is to make sure it's clear to us exactly what we mean by that, in terms of a structure. And that's actually an area that we, we're hoping that we'll be able to focus on, and that will then continue to be able to support and better support and measure the activities that are happening at the school site, as well as what we're doing at a district level.
One thing I think you'll see as we bring recommendations forward, we're having these conversations right now, is it possible to improve the amount of participation we have from our parents in that connection? I believe so. Is it probable, when we have the same people, trying to do that additional work? Or do we need to put some additional resources and bring some expertise to the district that can help us? Because we are working really hard at doing it and getting X result. If we want X plus Y, then there may be some additional resources that we need to put in place, and that expertise might not be in our room yet. And so, we may need to bring that from this, so that, without bringing you what one recommendation's going to be already, I think you will be pleasantly, surprised is the right word, but you will see that we believe that as well. And in order to make that happen, we have to put resources behind it. And we're at a point now where we're going to have to focus resources in that way, and if we truly believe in parent engagement, continuing to do what we're doing, we're working really, really hard. I can't look at my staff and tell them to work any harder.
Right.
To get more results. That's not the problem. But do we have the resources and the expertise in place to get that done? And you'll see that moving forward in this process. Actually, very excited about having a conversation.
Two years ago, I was requesting 2% of our budget to do exactly that, and we didn't have four votes. I hope we get on that track, because apparently, it's not happening. It's a shame that, you know, parents, and it's not only this program, it's other programs. I've seen other reports, only just recently in our board package, two parents, maybe four parents showed up at different other meetings. But there's a lot, like you said, there's model programs out there. We went, we all went to the California School Board Association meeting, we saw exit programs at other schools, districts, and, and, and we saw what school districts invest in parent engagement, and a lot of times, it was 2% to 4% of their, of their LCAP resources. And so...
So, those are good discussions when we have our budget priorities. Definitely bring those up there. Did you have any other questions?
Yes, I do. Again, I'm going to go back to Title V, Education, Division 1, California Department of Education. I requested that all board members read this. There are some issues that are still on the table, that have not been addressed as a result of the new reform or new regs. And I please, I'd like to have other board members get a copy of this. For instance, I'm going to say one of them that's really meaningful to me is... What are the, okay, an LEA, which is a district, shall determine the percentage of which services for unduplicated pupils must be increased or improved above services provided to all pupils in the fiscal year as follows. One, estimates, estimate the amount of the LCFF target attributed to the supplemental and concentrated grants for the LEA calculated pursuant to Education Code Section 4238.02 and 2574 in the fiscal year. LCAP is adopted. So, anyway... But there is no actual monies amount. I haven't seen no actual, how much money is going to be in the base? How much money is going to be on the supplemental? And how much money are we going to spend in the concentrated?
Mr. Seruti?
By, by, by the district and by each school.
Mr. Hoffman or Mr. Seruti? I believe that we've already received this. Either, Mr. Hoffman, you honor is...
I was trying to find the actual page where we outline the upcoming meetings. And in the upcoming meetings, it's exactly, the slides that we had in here today were related directly to what the Board of Education adopted as the new regulations. That information is in your presentation, it was in the board communication. Exactly, exactly, the information that you asked for is there.
Yes, I said, some of it is.
And then, the next meeting is a four-hour meeting, where the first item is, okay, let's talk about the dollars.
Okay.
What's on the table? We had the conversation in closed session with regards to negotiations.
Right.
And we had that, so the idea that you don't have the information about the money, the funding that we have, is just not accurate.
It's not what?
It's not accurate.
Your statement is not accurate. We provided the information, and the next meeting...
Tonight, we didn't see it.
And this is a one-hour introductory to process. The next meeting is a four-hour meeting, and the first topic is budget.
So, it's part of an ongoing process, so we can't sit here and say, well, it's not all there, we haven't gone through the entire process yet. But it is outlined in our presentation.
To me, that should be the first thing. We ought to have the budget and how much we, we have for each school.
Okay, so...
Each site.
And again, this is information that, at the meeting that we had scheduled yesterday, you and I could have gone over step by step, but that didn't happen. So, we are scheduled to meet again on Friday, and we can have these conversations. But if we don't have one-on-one time, we're not going to be able to do this type of detail with the questions that you have. I can spend as much time as you need to make sure you clearly understand the process and where we're headed, as much time as you need, but you have to meet with me.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
I'm asking questions that I think are prudent, or our community needs to know.
They have been outlined, Mr. Perez.
Thank you.
All right, any other board comments? I would like to, first of all, thank all of you for your thorough and very thoughtful presentation, Mr. Seruti, as always, Ms. Lowry and Ms. Hikido. Very, very thoughtful and very thorough. Can, I, I just have a few comments that I noticed in the presentations that I just wanted to highlight. I like that the update is very consistent with all of the subgroups and stakeholders. I like that there's a unifying message. So, I appreciate that that's reinforced constantly. I think that that's, when you want the buy-in, it needs to be that on point at all times. And I really appreciate that you are exceeding the LCAP engagement requirements. I think that's fantastic. The LCAP metrics, I thought it was a very thorough and very impressive list of your stakeholder feedback. And the emerging thing, themes, I think were also very, very interesting. And I do know, as being a CSBA delegate, Assembly member, that our neighboring districts turn to our program, our LCAP plan, to get guidance for their own. So, kudos to all of the work that you do. I do want to highlight one particular group out of Laguna Creek that I think does an excellent job, and we can look to them as sort of a role model to increase parent engagement. And that is the African-American group out of Laguna Creek. I think it's called the Concerned African-Americans. Just a tremendous group, they have a very high success rate for getting more engagement with, with the parent community. So, rather than reinvent the wheel, let's look at what's working with, within our own internal structure and using that, hopefully, to model in some of our other schools.
Timing's great on that. Actually, I met with Dr. Fortune and Mr. John Taylor.
Yes.
Just yesterday, along with Mrs. Penna. And we went through, and actually went through step by step to look at some of the successes they've had, but still running into some of the same problems. How do you engage more parents? So, as we're actually having this conversation with them, we had the conversation about, okay, so let's build on what we're doing.
Right.
Currently, and see if we can do that even better at Laguna Creek and Harriet Eddy. Before we go and spread it out, let's make sure we have our best practices really in place. So, we actually just had that conversation, I thought it was a very productive conversation, and it will be part of what we do moving forward as well.
That, that's fantastic. And then, I, I appreciate Mr. Hoffman's comment on, you know, you can only do so much, and I think you've done an incredible job with the finite resources that you do have. So, I want to recognize that. And I think if we are looking to invest in increased parent engagement, that needs to be brought up during our budget priorities and make that a priority for the board. And it, and I agree, I think it will require additional resources, not just the dynamic personnel that we have, but looking at other programs of what, what does work. CSBA does offer workshops during our conferences on how to increase stakeholder engagement with a specific focus on parent engagement. So, I think we do have some resources available out there that can assist us, but echoing Mr. Fortina's comment on, we've provided, provided it in very, various different avenues. Can we do more? Absolutely. But I think we do one heck of a job with what we do have. So, thank you all for what you do.
Thank you. And I can, I can assure the board, Mr. Hoffman and the cabinet, we'll have a, we'll have a great deal of financial information and programmatic information, so you'll be, you'll have a good four hours ahead of you. So, and we'll make sure it's structured, so it'll be, it'll be exciting work for you.
We're bracing ourselves. Thank you, Mr. Seruti. Next, we do not have a budget update, so I'm moving on to public comment. And I do have one blue card, Ms. Susan Mason. And Ms. Mason, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here tonight to request that the board reverse its approval of the revision to board policy and administrative regulation 6145-dash-dot-two, which was approved March 3, 2015. I contacted Pacific Justice Institute to ask about the status of AB 1266. Their response in part reads, "Perhaps more noteworthy, though, is the fact that no school district is required to adopt any particular policy relative to AB 1266. The districts that are adopting such policies are making their own choices and should be held accountable as such." Next, I would like to refer to the four-page document that, that you have from Pacific Justice Institute. As you can see, it's dated January 14, 2014, last year. It's to all K-12 public school trustees and administrators from Kevin T. Snyder, Chief Counsel, and it's about the effective date of AB 1266. So, reading the introduction, numerous individuals have contacted this office with inquiries as to whether Assembly Bill 1266 referred to in the popular media as the co-ed bathroom bill law has taken effect. The heart of this issue concerns the question of the legal consequences of the submission of signatures for a referendum on a statute. In other words, does a bill take effect during the pendency of the referendum process? This memorandum addresses that question. So, the issue is, has AB 1266 gone into effect? The short answer here is no. Presentation of the requisite signatures for a referendum stays or suspends the bill. So, there's a discussion, there's some facts listed for you to read, there's the law. And then, on page four, the conclusion, or page three at the bottom. "In light of the above analysis, the co-ed bathroom bill remains suspended until the referendum process runs its course." I'll let you finish that. I contacted Mr. Madison as a board partner to the review of this revision, and he responded, thank you, pretty quickly, that he would ask the appropriate... thank you, pretty quickly, that he would ask the appropriate department to respond. So Ms. Pena has already contacted me tonight and said that I can expect a response from, from her department, so I'm awaiting that. But I thought this was interesting, that I have recent, you know, contact with Pacific Justice Institute, and they're not giving this, they're, they're saying that the bill is still suspended. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. All right, I have no other blue cards, so bargaining units. Any bargaining unit wishing to address the board? Ms. Clifford?
It's been a while. President Singh Allen, members of the board, Mr. Hoffman, Ms. Hein. I, I don't think I ever properly introduced myself to you. I think it's been that long since I spoke. I'm Nancy Clifford. I'm Senior Staff with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, and for the last almost, almost twelve years, I've been assigned to work here representing the bulk of the classified workforce here in this district, who are members of Local two-five-eight. I want to talk to you tonight about library services and library technicians. I, I was not at the last board meeting when you decided to, when you voted to reduce the twelve library technicians that, that are on the, on the block this year. And had I been, I, I would have had something to say to you then. I do have something to say to you tonight because of that and because of the, the wonderful resolution that you passed as a board just a few minutes ago, honoring the work of library workers, and the emphasis on reading and language arts development that is part of your core program now. You know, in elementary schools, there is no library program unless there are library technicians. There are no library media teachers who work in elementary school libraries. There are only library technicians. And when I got here at the end of two thousand and three, beginning with the, with, in March of two thousand and four, we started laying off library technicians. And in practically every single year since then, we have either reduced or wholly laid off library technicians. You can't run a ro, a robust elementary library services program if you don't employ people to do that very thing. And when the, with your emphasis now on, on students being able to read and read well by the time they're in third grade, if you don't, if your library services program doesn't augment what you're doing in the classroom, you're missing a huge opportunity. And sadly, that's what's been going on, partly because of the way the budget is, and partly, I think, because of the priority that's given to classified work, workers generally. And I don't mean that as a, as a complaint, it's just how it is. But when it comes to catching students, catching, helping them to catch fire with the love of learning and reading, the earlier we can do that, the better. You know, I was listening on my way over here from our union meeting, there was this, a report on National Public Radio about the way Latino children are lagged behind almost from birth because they, because in the culture, in many parts of the culture, children are not expected to speak a lot. There's a reverence for, for elders, and they're not to speak unless they're spoken to, and mothers don't make it a practice, because it's not a part of the culture, to read to their children a lot when they're still very young. But something like fifty-nine percent of, of white mothers say that they read to their children every single day from the time they're, they're little ones. That starts the achievement gap. And then by the time they're in third grade, they're already behind. And if they're not getting services in those libraries, then the only thing they're getting is classroom instruction. And it isn't, if it isn't augmented by the work that happens in those school libraries, you miss out on so much, and it gets worse and worse and worse every year. Now, I commend you for having augmented the services provided by library technicians in the middle schools and in the secondary schools. But we still have a huge problem in elementary schools. There are thirty-nine, you saw two of them here tonight, there are thirty-nine library technicians. Most of them work barely three hours a week, I'm sorry, three hours a day. And I can tell you that the best you can hope to do most of the time on a three-hour-a-day, fifteen-hour-a-week schedule is to open the library long enough on as many, on maybe three or four days to let students from the classes come in and select books. But that's about it. That's about it. We've done a little bit better in the Title I schools because of the oversight of the federal government and the requirement that we change the work that library technicians do in the, in the Title I schools, but we're still lagging behind in the elementary school. You know, when, when Steve Winlock was here, way back in olden days, I, I, I was impressed at how hard he worked, how he wheeled and cajoled his, 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 his colleagues on the cabinet to get another half hour, another thirty minutes, another forty-five minutes, and at some point, just before his departure, we were up to four hours plus benefits at every single elementary school. That was a huge achievement, but once he left, it started sliding back, until we got to two thousand and ten, when nearly every library technician was either wholly laid off or so severely reduced that they couldn't afford to come to work here anymore. And the better days that we've all been hoping for are here now. I honestly believe that the twelve library technicians who are on the list for reduction this year should not be. We're talking about restoring, in some cases, twelve minutes. Twelve minutes. Do you know, a library technician at step three makes a whopping fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents an hour? That's twenty-six cents a minute. It would, I, I didn't do the math for what, twenty-six times, uh, times, um, times sixty, times five, or times three is, but it's budget dust. It's what we call budget dust, and it's what you should call budget dust. With an ending fund balance that you project currently at more than fifty-five million dollars, you can afford to do this. And, and what you get back, what you get in return for doing that is providing better services at a crucial juncture in a, in a student's life, helping them re, not relearn, but augmenting the learning that happens in the classroom by taking it into the, the libraries. It's crucial that we do this. This district, as much of a commitment as it makes to the achievement of all of its students, and the amazing commitment that it's made to closing the achievement gap, should do better when it comes to elementary libraries. And I'm here to ask you to do that tonight. I'm here to ask you to first restore those meager minutes of cuts that have been made with the, the twelve library techs who are on the, on the chopping block this year. I believe that Local twenty-six-twenty has also proposed that at three, at least three more hours a, oh, a day be added to the schedules of elementary library technicians. That would put them at six hours plus benefits, but it doubles their availability to children. It doubles their availability to students. It doubles their avail, their ability to work with teachers to make sure that what the kids are doing in, in the classroom gets supplemented in the libraries. And we can't do that unless we have them working there. Please, please, consider doing this. At fifteen dollars and seventy-one cents an hour is a bargain, and you should take advantage of it, but you can't if you don't make the commitment to a robust elementary library services program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clifford. Any others? Yes, Ms. Deutsch?
Mary Deutsch, California School Employees Association. Good evening, Ms. Singh Allen, our board, Mr. Hoffman, and Ms. Hein. I like to come up every once in a while and surprise you with an attitude of gratitude, and tonight we have that. Today, we did receive very happy news, and we were facing layoffs as well for some of our members. They were able to revoke them before they actually went into place, which makes us and our lives happier, and we just wanted to say thank you to our Human Resources Department who had actually looked and collaboratively thought of how we were going to get these positions back before we had to deliver the sad news, and our Finance Department that had found it, and all the departments that had worked with us. It really does help us to go and, and have these decisions made before we had to go and lay the people off. And I do hope for the same outcome for our other associations.
Thank you, Ms. Deutsch. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much for your report. Now I'd like to call on Mr. Peers for the Facilities Master Plan Update.
Thank you, President Singh Allen, members of the board, Superintendent Hoffman, and Ms. Hein. We are proud to present to you tonight a second installment of our Facilities Master Plan Update for you. I'd first like to introduce Mr. Bill Heinecke. He's our Director of Planning, and Mrs. Kim Williams, who is our Planning Manager in our department. And I'd like to thank them, and I have a debt of gratitude for them, for all of their hard work in our Master Plan Update. Need more?
Are there any extras for the audience, for anybody interested? We can maybe leave some by Ms. Hein.
We can provide them for them if they.
Okay. Do we all have?
One.
Oh, here we go.
One more.
Got it?
Okay, so.
Well, they've got it up there. Thank you.
And it should be there, and it's available. If anyone would like a copy, I'd be happy to get them a copy as well. It's being, it's a work in progress, and will continue to be so as we move forward. I would like to share with the board, kind of piggybacking on Mr. Sarudi's work, just like the L cap and the countless hours that have gone into it, the Facilities Master Plan shares in that sort of scope. At the same time, tonight's a second installment for the board, in addition to the growth component that was presented to the board li, last summer and into the fall. Some of you weren't with us, so we have a, a quick update at the end of tonight's presentation, just to kind of bring the growth component, kind of to, to speak as well at the same time. But what I'd like to share with the board, although it's a long presentation, we're not into the minutia in terms of the facility condition assessment, which is what we're going to speak to tonight, we look forward to, and I, I would hope that moving forward, once we get L cap completed for this year and for next year, that we can sit down with the board and have specific workshops just on the, the components of the facility master plan. So we gave you about an hour-long presentation just on the growth component. After you took that information in, we moved forward with the facility condition assessment. It's an undertaking unlike the district has ever achieved. We have never assessed the condition of all of our existing facilities throughout our district, and being the fifth-largest district in the state, that is quite the undertaking and takes a significant amount of time. So there's two components that we've now completed, the growth, and now the facility, facility condition assessment that we'll speak to tonight. There's going to be a third component that we're going to look forward to with the board and the community, and that's going to be on our learning environment and our educational adequacy of our existing facilities, and what the board would like us to deliver in the way of twenty-first century learning environment. So you had a third piece. At the end of this, all three components will come together. It will be binders and binders of information, which will be the backbone of our work in facilities and providing our students the proper educational environment that they deserve. So with that, I will just jump right into quickly, what is a Facility Master Plan and what's its purpose for our district? So really, what the Facilities Master Plan does is outlines a process and a mechanism for us to create, and then to also care for the facilities that support and augment the district's mission. So you all have seen that picture there of E four, and just as E four is the backbone of how we deliver education in our district, and for the L cap, the Facility Master Plan will be the backbone for us delivering facilities and caring for those facilities within our district. It's important that we use E four when we look at our Facility Master Plan, because as you well know, one of the eight state priorities deals with, eight state priorities, and L cap deals with facilities and the condition of those facilities, and they must meet a certain definition of good repair in order to satisfy the L cap. So the timing is perfect in, in regards to our Facility Master Plan update as well. And I believe, at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Heinecke.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening. Rob began a discussion about what a Facilities Master Plan is for us and what, in a, again, in a broader scope, what does it do? It looks at our existing and future facility needs, again, to support the district's educational mission. So we look at current and projected physical condition of our existing school facilities. We look at their performance, and, and we understand that their, uh, their performance and what, what we're asking our facilities to do may change over time. And then we look at what our facility needs are into the future, both in terms of new facilities for growing communities, and what we need to do to maintain the existing facilities we have. We develop then a scope of work to satisfy those needs, estimate costs, look at timing, and at the, uh, funding that's available, and eventually those turn into actual projects. So when we talk about the, these facility types, again, we have two types. We'll be looking at our existing facilities tonight, and then a recap of the growth and expansion facilities. When we look at our existing facilities, there are kind of two times, two kinds of, let's use the, the generic term, repair work. There's sort of the day-in, day-out operational repair work that needs to be done. Somebody gets a phone call, the drinking fountain is not working at their school, has to go be repaired. That's not the kind of facilities that the Facilities Master Plan addresses. Facilities Master Plan addresses what we're calling capital renewal efforts. So this is looking at services to address conditions both now and that we can anticipate going forward into the future. And we know mechanical systems only last so long, and if we know it's fifteen, twenty years old now, we know that pretty soon we're going to have to address that type of work. We have multiple ways of then assessing the condition of our existing facilities. We are going to talk at length here about the Facilities Condition Assessment that's been completed. Going to look at the state modernization program, which is primarily based on the age of facilities. And as Rob said, and we look forward to looking at programmatic requirements. And all of those sort of are used in parallel. When we look at our existing facilities, we want to address them in the same way we would as we were designing a new school. We look at programmatic needs, what kind of facilities are needed to support that program, what kind of funding is available, and then develop a project for a school, whether it's existing or a new facility. So the Facilities Condition Assessment, again, a large undertaking, first time our district had embarked upon this. It was an eyes-on inspection of virtually every building, every parking lot, every roof in the district. The assessment was performed by Jacobs Program Management, they're a national firm. They, they do this for a lot of districts across the country, and the folks that were brought in to do the assessment for us see a lot of schools, and for the most part, it's not that they didn't find anything wrong, but they were very complimentary about the condition of our schools in total. So that's important to remember that as we go forward here. We ask them to look and look at existing conditions and project forward, what kind of costs can we anticipate happening within the next ten years? And then they establish some priorities and also some costs for that, to address those facility needs. So one of the things I want to talk to you about tonight is the Facilities Condition Index, or the FCI, sort of an industry standard of ranking the physical health of a facility, if you will. It compares a facility sort of to itself. How much is it going to cost to maintain the building versus how much would it cost to just replace the building outright? The higher the percentage gets towards that replacement cost, then we end up replacing that building. But the FCI does balance out some of the inconsistencies you can have. But the FCI does balance out some of the inconsistencies you can have. So for instance, a million-dollar project at Pleasant Grove High School versus a half-a-million-dollar project at, say, Florin Elementary School, two different amounts of money, but the effect to address needs at Florin Elementary School probably is greater, because that site may have more needs, certainly is smaller, so that money will go farther, those sort of things. So the FCI is a way of addressing that. So this chart outlines the Facilities Condition Index for all of our school sites, starting with the oldest school sites at the left and working towards the right at the newer, our newer sites. And you can see the older schools tend to be the ones that have the most need. Also, I'm sorry, this is the cost. I want to make sure we're looking at the right slide. Okay, so this is the total cost to address facility needs at each site. And again, the newer schools tend to have a lower need, the larger schools, because of their size, tend to have a higher need. And this is something, then, if we look at, I think, so now if we look at the Facility Condition Index, the slide that should be displayed now, this is the same thing, each school, oldest to newest, across the, from left to right, but looking at the comparison of the needs on a site-by-site basis using the Facilities Condition Index. So, looking at both the existing and projected needs, we have a cost estimate for that, and it's a substantial number, over $450 million, again, over a 10-year period. There are other projects, other needs that are not addressed. This is simply the amount of money needed to keep the existing facilities that we have in current operating condition. We have a chance, again, to, in a minute, we'll talk about potential modernization funny, money. Prop 39, energy efficiency money, will address some of these needs, and there are other
And just to highlight a couple of the points on these two slides, we, quite frankly, purposely didn't list the names of the schools, and we didn't want ourselves to get caught up in which school is that, and which school is that, because we will and want to have that conversation with the Board. But those conversations individually are probably an hour-plus, just to talk about each and every school and why it is where it is. But that was by design, so that we could be somewhat quick tonight. So, yeah. So moving forward, I can't stress enough the vastness of that undertaking, assessing over 5 million square feet of our district. And the Board members who were with us at the time might recall that we did that in unison with our Prop 39 assessment, and we were able to leverage some dollars from SMUD that paid for our energy assessment, and that went a long ways into also footing the bill for this Facility Condition Assessment. So moving on from that, we move into what we call the State Modernization Program. And I do need to caveat this for the Board's sake. You know, we all know that the state has currently exhausted all bond funds for the state program, whether it be for new construction or modernization. But it is what we have today, and it's all we have today. And we have a tremendous amount of eligibility under that program, and we use that as a gauge, also with regard to the need of our schools, not so much with the condition assessment, as much as it is an indicator of the age of the school and the learning environment changes that we know those schools will need. But because the state's out of bond funds, and I've spoken to the Board a little bit about this, we know that something's going to give. And that is, the program's either going to continue by design, and we'll see another statewide bond measure on the ballot, and there is an initiative out there that's now taking root. There's a number of members in the Assembly and the Senate who are authoring the bills as we speak that would continue a bond program. But in its absence, the other talk on the street, if you will, is a program that will kind of pay-as-you-go, so districts can get a funding stream that they can rely on. And my point to the Board tonight is, regardless of what happens with the current program, I don't envision the whole thing going kaput and not having a funding stream to address needs such as modernization. So we want to capture that. I think we'd be remiss in our duties if we didn't in our master plan, because it is one of the resources that Mr. Heinecke spoke of that will help us fill the need and fund these projects. So similar to the scattergram, I'll just show you quickly this graph, and it's not to get into the individualized schools, but the existing State Modernization Program really only looks at two things. It looks at the size of the school in terms of student population, and it looks at the age of the school. So any portable classrooms that are 20 years or older are eligible, and any permanent classrooms that are 25 years or older are eligible. And this graph is just an example of each of our schools and where their eligibility lies today, purely with regard to state funding for those individualized schools. This is a synopsis of that graph with one add-on. So the first bullet, the roughly $82 million of eligibility, is our current bank of eligibility in the state program for modernization. We've went ahead and projected out the increase in our eligibility over the course of the next 10 years, given that our master plan will be a 10-year document. That adds approximately $72 million of eligibility to the program, and it comes to a total 10-year eligibility of roughly $150 million. The current state program requires a match with the district. It's currently a 60-40 program. So in other words, in order to access that roughly $150 million from the state, we would have to match that to the tune of roughly $100 million in order to leverage those funds. So in that regard, with the district match required, we're looking in our current master plan of a modernization program of roughly $260,000, $260 million, excuse me, that wouldn't be much. And having said that and made that mistake, it's really not much for the size of the district that we are. There's a lot of talk right now that the modernization program in itself and its grant funding is woefully inadequate, and that it covers just the bare necessities in terms of Americans with Disability Act requirements and some other general modernizations. So however the program changes moving forward, I think we're going to see a sizable increase to the grant amounts and to how the modernization program is funded. So bringing that all together, we have the 10-year Facility Condition Assessment that Mr. Heinecke shared with you of roughly $454 million. If we back out of that, our state modernization eligibility of $154 million, then the district would be required to come up with roughly $300 million worth of funding to fit that need, just with regard to our Facility Condition Assessment. So those, we talked a little bit about our existing facilities and the needs there, and when I say this, this is literally two binders' worth of information, three-inch binders. But we wanted to also bring the Board back to the reference of where we're at with our expansion facilities, specifically growth. And in that regard, Ms. Williams will share a couple of slides with you.
So how are we planning for the growth that we know is coming to our district? Projecting when and where new homes will be built within our district is one of the most critical pieces of work that we do in our Planning Department. And we carefully monitor and track all phases of development, planning, from the application through the approval of the projects. You know, we work very closely with all three cities and the county planning departments and the developers and home builders to make sure that the land use plans include enough school sites and that they're appropriately located. And so we work very closely with them all the time. And the third thing that we do in our Planning Department is we update our Melrose or Measure A tax roll each year. Our Melrose tax is an actual line item on every property tax bill within our district. If you own property, well, you would know that, because it shows up on your tax bill. And each year, we have to provide the county with the appropriate tax to, for each and every parcel. And every year, if there's a newly created parcel, which there frequently are, and/or a use change, then we have to let them know what they should be assessing on those new parcels. So that's another thing that we do all the time in our Planning Department. So this map is just a graphic representation of the homes that were built in the last five years within our district. And you can see that the most active areas are up there in Anatolia, Sunridge area, down in Laguna Ridge or Madeira, and then also in Vineyard Point. I showed the numbers there, so you can see that there's been a gradual decline. We were stuck right around 400 or 500 for a couple of years, but we've been slowly climbing back up. However, it's still quite a difference from our peak in 2004, when we had 5,100, 5,154 single-family homes and over 1,000 multifamily homes constructed in just that one year. So it's been quite a change for us, but we are, things are getting better, and there's been a steady uptick lately. So there are about 90,000 potential new homes already approved or currently being planned within our boundaries. And associated with those new developments are 54 contemplated future schools. And this map shows you where those new schools are already identified within land use plans and will eventually be built.
So moving forward, what we want to engage Cabinet, the entire district stakeholders, and the Board in, is exploring the 21st century learning environment. That's a new phrase you'll start hearing more and more moving forward. And we know today's classroom isn't going to fit the needs of students and teachers as we prepare them for the 21st century. And I know right now, learning environments are becoming much more flexible. You know, it's not going to be that standard teaching wall at the front of the classroom with a number of student desks oriented at that teaching wall. Ms. Ellis and I have had a number of conversations on this line, and she's volunteered her classroom to go ahead and be somewhat modernized into that frame of thought, to see how well that works for her. I know Superintendent Hoffman and I, and the Board President, Ms. Ellis, and a number of stakeholders will be going to a workshop shortly in May where we're going to talk about just that. But I think it's important that we work with the Board in identifying these next three goals, which will be key components of the master plan as well, which will help drive, you know, not needs in terms of numbers of classrooms and how many HVAC units need to be replaced, but what the classroom is going to look like and what we need to prepare our students for. And then facility standards is another exploration that we'll be taking in the master plan, where we just look at all of our support facilities and what they can support, how the numbers of students they can support, and the numbers of community members they can support, and whether or not they're adequate, educationally speaking, in tomorrow's environment. So moving forward, this is going to be a long rollout. It's going to involve a number, in my opinion, and if the Board's willing, workshops with the Board where we can talk in more detail. The growth component alone, we can get you into the minutia of these individual developments, where the schools are planned, what those schools would look like, how many students they would serve, and then you can imagine on the Facility Condition Assessment having that same level of detailed involvement. But we want to have lots of engagement with the Board and ultimate direction from the Board on some of those key components. That's going to entail Cabinet's input. We're going to have to meet with each individual school site. That will be a lot of community input as this is rolled out. A good master plan should ask the community for their input, and then ultimately Board adoption in what will be a very large document, bringing all three of these pieces together. So one quick thing I'd like to share, you know, I hesitate when I present this, because it's a big number in terms of cost. And when we talk to you about 54 future schools and $450 million worth of need, just to keep our existing facilities in the shape that they're in today, I don't say those things lightly, but we really need to identify the need, and we need to have that in a document that provides our roadmap for the future. So we can identify the needs all we'd like, but we need the resources, as Mr. Sarudy and Mr. Hoffman talked about earlier relative to LCAP. And that resource is going to come twofold. We're going to have to support the need here at the local level, and then obviously at the statewide level. And so the timing is good for us in terms of the state and all of the discussions we're having now, so we can start planning our flag, and Elgrove can show people right now what our true need is moving forward. The growth component is staggering. I get that. It's about $2 billion worth of school facilities in today's dollar, not even planning for the future and when those schools might be needed. The growth component will take care of itself so long as we have a state program and that developers mitigate their impact. So the current program's working, developers are mitigating at about 50% of their impact, and they want to continue that, but they're asking the state to step in and mitigate for the remaining 50%. So so long as that model stays true, that resource will be there for us as the homes are built. It's the Facility Condition Assessment piece and the modernization piece where we really also need the state to step up and help fund the educational environment, so that we have adequacy throughout the state and equity of all districts throughout the state. But this is not to be confused with the day operations. These are not the men and women out there completing work orders through the routine restricted maintenance every day. This isn't fixing what we have. This is large-scale maintenance and renewal-type projects throughout our district. So with that, I'm sure you have plenty of questions and input, and I would be interested to hear what you have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. I'll start with my right here for any Board comments or questions. Ms. Albiani?
Thank you. I'm still taking it all in.
Lot of information?
Yes, 54 seems like a 10. So from what you say, when we're talking about planning, I was at David Rees when it went through a major modernization. And that is the thought of modernization, that a similar process, correct?
Correct, absolutely.
And that's the part that will be budgeted a large portion out of ours. And you're saying when we add new schools, it comes developer, it is not such a large budget item out of our line when we build a new school? I don't, I've never been here for a new school, so...
So I appreciate the question. It's an important one. As the model, and it's important, I think, that we delineate, the current program, as it's scripted from SB 50 in 1998, it means that a home builder, at the day of building permit for the home, pays the district what is, what at the time is determined to be 50% of their impact to the district for housing the students associated with the new development. And then the state would essentially match that, so that we could build the new classrooms and the new schools for those students. So in that regard, we're not going out to our local tax base to say, "We need you..."
To pay for these new people's schools.
...for this growth.
Okay.
The growth in that model does take care of itself. Not to belabor it, but just, it's an important caveat. That's within the state model of what a complete school is. In some cases, we have augmented schools, like with performing arts centers at some of our high schools, our stadiums. Those are not covered in the state model. So in those regards, we've been fortunate with Measure A to augment the project.
Okay.
But for the most part, the growth should, should, and currently does, take care of itself.
As a past remodeler, we pay in when you remodel, too.
So with modernization, with modernization, we do look to our local community to help support the funding and the construction of that project. And historically, the state's always been there to participate as well. So that would be critical at the same time. Now, modernization's a tricky word. You and I, I think, can say it and know what it means. Some folks don't. And you saw at David Rees what you got for the State Modernization Program. I think moving forward, we're going to need more from it, because the learning environment is going to change significantly to deliver proper education to our students. So I think it'll be more robust than what you and I have been accustomed to at, say, at David Rees.
Okay.
And Rob and I, we've had some pretty significant conversations along those lines. Part of the piece is, we have existing schools that are aging. And what we have to be able to do, there's an equity piece across the district as well. Does a classroom in a brand-new school, how does that compare to a classroom of a 40-year-old school? And so you can only modernize to a point.
Right.
And at some point, there's actually new construction that will happen on existing campuses, because that's what those kids deserve and those... Because that, because that's what those, those kids deserve, and those communities deserve. So there'll be a balance within that. So we use the term "modernization." It doesn't mean just turning the buildings back into what they were, but it's actually getting them ready for that 21st century. That, that's the concept that we're trying to make sure we're clear about.
Okay. I, I have a huge belief in equity, and bringing the older schools up. I, I don't believe, if you go to the new school, you should have the coolest toys, so. Thank you very much.
Mr. Madison?
Yeah, I don't have a lot to talk about, or questions there, except that I had the pleasure to experience the rapid growth that we went through. And I'll tell you, it, it, it wasn't fun. I mean, we couldn't put schools up fast enough, with the pressure from the communities, and kids being bussed, and you name it, all over, so. But we did rise to the occasion. We got a lot of schools up very rapidly, and we did a good job of it. I, I'm very concerned about the bond issue, you know, with the state, the way we did things before, and what it is right now. So I'm, I'm hopeful that the legislatures, they can really take a hard look at that, and push on that, and hopefully we're involved in that process.
We are very much involved, and Mr. Hoffman and I have, have been very outspoken about it. And because we're so local, we've been, they often do want to hear from us. And so when I shared that number, 54 new schools that are already identified, absent a state program, because they're also reluctant to ask develop, home builders to increase their fees, but absent a state program, we can only build one school for every two schools we need, with the current model. And so when you talk about a Sunrise Douglas, and a Madeira, Laguna Ridge need, and only being able to build one of those schools, they really won't help each other because of the distance-
Sure.
...that you have to span. So I, I agree, and we were only able to do what we, what we did in the growth days, because of the state program.
Exactly, yes. And the modernization is, well, very concerned about it. I certainly believe in the, the equity. We've got some schools that are, are really struggling right now, and needing a modernization. I know Elk Grove High School is one that really, really, we need to put something into that school. And I don't know if it's modernization, or we're just going to have to really do something different in terms of just, almost like a new school, a little bit, in, in that area there. And I remember when we went through Valley High School, because they were over 25 years old or so, and it, and it really helped them out a lot, too. So the modernization and improving schools and equity is, is a real concern. And we were fortunate with Marion Mix, because we were still under that old formula there, before we lost that, that part of the money there. And that's going to be a beautiful elementary school out there. Thank you.
Mr. Fortina?
Thank you. Rob, I got several questions, and I'm going to, kind of break them out, and ask them in, in certain ways, depending upon your answers.
Sure.
First question is, will we receive the, by site data, in the future discussions that we're going to have? And when I say site data, site data with respect to technology capability, grounds and buildings, asphalt, concrete, repair, replacement, portables that have roofs leaking in floors, buckling, size of current classrooms, will, will that be coming forward?
Was the first part, will, will you receive?
Yes.
Yes. So what we would like to do is have a discussion that's just on that.
On those issues.
And we would preface that with the data and the information that you can, you can go through on your, at your leisure, before we have those discussions, absolutely. And so what we didn't share in the conversation, that has all now been placed into a database called MAPS, that we will, it's a fluid, living document, that we, we will update now, moving forward, hopefully for the history of the district moving forward. So it'll always be a living, breathing document, where we can pull up a school now, and see exactly what its needs are today and moving forward. So yes, we, we do have that information. We'd be happy to share it, will share it.
And then, as we move into the budget planning, will specific proposals be coming forward for '15, '16, as we look at modernization versus repair or update?
From, from my perspective, and, and this'll be a conversation point, obviously with the board, and it's, it will ultimately be your decision, I, my personal feel is that the number is so big, and given that the statewide deferred maintenance program is now completely gone, and honestly, even when it was here, for us, it was $2.5 million. So our need is, is much greater than that annually, just to maintain what we have. So we did match it at the tune of $2.5 million. It was $5 million a year. It, it's, it falls short of what the need is. So my perspective, absent the board's direction otherwise, and the superintendent, will be that we address those needs with a future bond, and we, we, we address them in that fashion on a 10-year plan, starting in 2016. We do have some one-time deferred maintenance carryover that we're using to deal with, you know, if we have a leaf, a roof, for instance, that's leaking, and it has to be repaired now. We are addressing those needs. But it, in my mind, standing here today, I don't see a proposal necessarily taking general fund dollars next year to address maintenance needs outside of routine restricted maintenance.
Then, then you have not placed any, and I'm trying to make a judgment.
Sure.
But you've not placed any site, grounds, issues as imminent danger, safety issues-
If we have any imminent danger or safety issues, we take care of those, absolutely.
Well, I mean, I would contend, if you spend even five minutes at an Elk Grove High School, you could easily say that the existing asphalt and concrete services constitute imminent danger, because they are uneven in almost every square foot you can walk on.
So I, I will, I won't disagree, but what I will say is, is, as you saw tonight, we have a huge need. And I think our need far outweighs our current resources. And we all know it's a zero-sum game in competing with general fund expenditures, but I, I think that our need, we could absorb the entire general fund right now, just to address the facility condition assessment. So that's just what I'm sharing with you tonight, but we can certainly have that conversation moving forward.
Yeah. I, I've placed some questions in writing already, and I, and I, and was going to address them verbally again. From discussions that have been held in a number of areas, I presume that numerous requests are going to be coming forward to the board during budget discussions for funding. And, and I just, as a member of the board, have discomfort if those discussions don't include deferred maintenance, because of the myriad of issues we have in schools. And then, and then to me, one of the bigger issues, and you, and you've addressed it, is, is how do we become a 21st century school, if we don't have the electrical capability to support today's technology? How do you do that? I, I, I mean, I guess it's rhetorical, like, you can't do it. And when do we put it on the table? You know, and I'm, I'm, I support putting a, a bond issue in front of Elk Grove Unified School District residents in the next election. I don't think that personally, there's a whole lot of time to be wasting, in terms of updating our schools, modernizing our schools, providing the safety that needs to be provided. And it's, you know, is it great that the state's working on it? Yeah, it is great, but, you know, in the meantime, we got a problem.
And, and I would absolutely agree with everything you just said.
That's the timeline. That's why we're doing this work right now.
That's what we're doing right now. And so the timing of a, of another, of another bond measure, if, if it should be a Prop 39 bond measure, would be November of 2016. There is a general election in, in June, but the timing of which doesn't allow a Prop 39 bond measure. But that's also, once, once we identify the needs through the summer, and the board ultimately adopts the master plan, then we really have to have the conversation about, how are we meeting the need? The need is so great, that I, I believe the only way we're going to meet it is through a local bond measure.
That will be our justification moving forward.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I truly don't disagree with anything you said. I, I think for us, right now, from a staff perspective, these needs are, are massive, and, and they're necessary. But because of LCFF, and just trying to get us back to the 2007, 2008 levels of funding, you know, we're looking for custodial to be restored, for grounds to be restored, for maintenance to be restored. You know, RRM increases to 3% minimally of the general fund next July, which is another $2.5 million that we have to spend on RRM. So I, I don't disagree at all with what you're saying, but there's, there's other requirements coming from the state that are forcing us to even spend the dollars elsewhere.
Right. And I guess I'm just saying that as we move forward to budget planning for '15, '16, you would build, the rest of your crew is smart enough, that you know who's sitting in number one position for safety.
Right.
Who's sitting in number one position for modernization. You, you know who they are.
Yep.
And you know what the costs are. And, and I was, I really kind of think that we're at a point that we need to have those discussions in public, and-
I agree.
-and look at where we're going to go. Thank you.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortina. Ms. Titus Espinosa?
Okay. Thank you. Well, first, I want to back up and ask a higher-level picture.
Sure.
And before I, before I ask my question, first, I want to reiterate that I know you, Mr. Pierce, are very active in letting, in, in keeping involved at the state level, and I should let my colleagues know, that Mr. Pierce has done a wonderful job educating and opening eyes in Sacramento. I, I saw that he provided some very illuminating testimony for those in the state capital earlier in the year, and I'm very grateful that he did so. So just, so I, I want to get a better handle on our modernization versus our new construction needs.
Okay.
And, and most of the numbers I see here say "modernization." So do you have figures, or maybe a proportion, that you can give me, of how our needs break down?
I do. So modernization is site-specific. So what we shared tonight was, was one, a little bit of detail on individual sites, and what their eligibility looks like, and then we brought that together as a whole. But when you submit to the state, it's for a David Rees Elementary, or a Floran High School, or an Elk Grove High School. And then you have to spend the dollars at those schools. The new construction dollars are an annual snapshot, and it's a district-wide bank of eligibility that you're limited to. And so you pull from that, and you can honestly use it wherever you see fit within your district. The board makes that local decision of, of where the need is. So it changes every year, because it asks us to update our enrollment projection. So every year, when we do our C-beds snapshot, it's how many kids we officially have in the district. That goes into the latest, greatest state enrollment projection. They compare that projection to our capacity that was previously approved, and the difference is our, our, our bank of new construction eligibility. So it, it really changes year by year by year. So I don't have a number off the top of my head, but the, because of the way the formula works, under the current program, I can assure you that because of the number of future housing developments that have been mapped, you're allowed to augment your enrollment projection by those approved developments. And so that eligibility is, it's, it's, it's kind of really always there, so long as you have a new development that you're augmenting your enrollment projection with. So it's, it's like everything we do, it's pretty detailed, and it's complex, but I don't, I don't have a number off the top of my head. And the state does change the rules occasionally, but as soon as it gets to a tentative map, the development itself, then we're able to account for that in our enrollment projections with the state, which generates the eligibility for that project.
Well, we'll go into more specific detail when we do the actual workshops. We just wanted, this is kind of the, the second stage in the process, and so we'll, we want to have the board commit to four, six-hour sit-down, like we're doing with LCAP over the next, next few weeks, with this modernization, and the whole facility master plan. Moving into the summer, with an idea, ideally, you know, mid-fall, we have the board take action, which gives us a timeline in getting ready for November 2016. So we've worked backwards with November 2016, no decision's been made, we haven't put anything in, but that's when we could do the Prop 39 piece. And so we're working backwards from that, to make sure we have everything in place to do that. And it's going to take significant work with Rob and the staff, and working with the board, to make sure there's clear understanding of all of that work.
Okay. And my next question actually pertains to what may or may not happen in November 2016. As, as I know Mr. Pierce knows, I want to make sure my colleagues know, the state-level involvement in the school facilities program is, is not something that's for certain. So the governor has said that he doesn't think the state should have the, the role it has had in the past, in providing what is now what the 60-40 match. As a matter of fact, before I came here, immediately before I came here, I was meeting with the Department of Finance on that point. It was a bit of like a staring contest.
Mm-hmm.
We were, you know, advocates in Department of Finance, trying to see who would blink first. I'm, I'm sad to say, there's no sign of budging with respect to Department of Finance yet. They're, they're not yet backing away from this model that they're advocating for, that, that they are giving, I think they call it, they're giving the locals the, the freedom to come up with their own revenue.
Right.
So we may not have a choice about putting a, a bond on the ballot. So again, your work is, it's very timely. I just would want to make sure that you work into your projection, all of the possibilities about how we may need to come up with the revenue.
Absolutely. And so ultimately, we, we will assume state funding and no state funding. And I, your, your point's spot-on with the Department of Finance right now. I've sat in the same room, right?
But you've had the same staring contest.
And they just say, the whole program, as you know, it's going away. Fortunately, there's members of the Assembly and the Senate who don't agree with that. And there's, even the Ledge Analyst Office came out with a proposal, and it says there is a need.
Yeah.
They don't want it to be a bond-funded program. They would like to see the state kind of do a pay-as-you-go, and pay districts on an annual basis, what they would otherwise be paying in debt service, and get the, but everyone's got an idea right now. I'm thankful for the ballot initiative, we'll see where that goes. But you're absolutely right, and the governor's still adamant that he does not support the state participating in any school facility program. So that, it'll be interesting. I, my personal opinion, and the governor and I totally disagree on that point, is I think the state has a constitutional requirement to provide free public education, and, and facilities are an integral part of that. So I, I just don't see, post Prop 13, how they can just back away from what they've been doing since the early 80s.
Well, I basically asked that question today at 3 o'clock, and I was told that the hardship carve-out is how they think they would get around the equity issue. And hardship in, in this, in this paradigm would mean, if a district does not have bonding capacity, literally cannot send a, a bond out, those are, are the Elias that would qualify for hardship. So it's very, very narrow criteria, so.
And you and I could talk about this all night, and I-
We'll have some fun.
So, but to that, I'd like to share, because you bring up wonderful points, and I, the board does need to be educated on these points, that under the current legal parameters of your ability to issue bonds, you have a bonding capacity under the law right now. You can't even get to the point you need to, to fund your facility needs on a 100% basis, because of those requirements that are put in place. So there would have to be wholesale changes, they would have to increase your capacity to bond, and, and quite honestly, I don't, I don't see the voters in many school districts, one, passing a bond, even if they have the ability, but certainly, two, passing a bond with such high tax rates, that, that they would be suggesting that we would have, they're basically passing on the debt obligation to the locals-
Yeah.
-under that scenario, and it's not, it's not attainable. So I pray calmer, cooler heads will prevail, but we have yet to see.
Yep.
I just had a comment. I just wanted to thank you again for the report. I think your clarity and clarification of going over each of the details are really instrumental, especially being a new board member. I also am interested to see, to echo some of what my colleagues have said up here, the site plans, and looking at the funding for each site, and the allocations of what needed by site. I know you had the breakdown in the previous slides, when you list the schools, but it's, it's hard to see in these images here.
Sure.
And so I, I'm really looking forward to the discussions, because for me, it's really instrumental. How do we make sure we're meeting, you know, the expectations as far as safety, 21st century technology, but then also meeting the growth that's going to be projected to come? You know, again, there's a lot of concerns with the existing facilities, but then also focusing on the future. So I really am looking forward to those discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perez?
Yes. I didn't quite hear, did we contract out for a study for doing something?
So the, the, the facility condition assessment piece was contracted out with a company called Jacobs International, and so they combined that with our Prop 39.
Mm-hmm.
That was our energy analysis under Prop 39, and SMUD paid a large portion of that. So we, we, we received the, the service at a, at a- So we received this service at a really good rate locally.
Can we see that report also?
The.
The report?
Study.
The study or whatever.
It's essentially what Mr. Fortina was asking for. That information will be forthcoming, absolutely.
Next workshop, okay. How much does your program or your section use GIS in everyday work? Because my suggestion is that, I've been reading how GIS, geographic information systems, and how it uses facilities, development projects throughout other school districts, they use it quite a bit. And I was wondering, do we use it to the max here within our district?
We use it daily, we use it a lot. It's one of those things, it's, there's an art form to it.
Right.
So for me to say we use it to the max, there might, someone else might say, well, you can put this layer, and you can do this with it too, so you're not. I think for our purposes, we're probably using it to the max. And we're also, what the, there's a number of benefits of GIS, but what it allows us to do is also work with the county's maps, and the city of Elk Grove's maps, and any other jurisdictions. So Ms. Williams and her staff uses it quite frequently, yes.
I've been studying them, studying how you use it. But I'd like to have more staff using it and doing trend studies and actual reports, more so visual reports, but, because, you know, every picture tells a story, or every map tells a trend, or whatever. Also, I'd like to know in your workshop, you know, how do you, or what is the criteria you use to modernize schools, like for instance, Dillard Elementary? And how did you prioritize? What's the tool you use internal here in your department, in which, you know, how we do, go about that? Just kind of a lot of gradiness into it.
Some of the tool is just what you saw tonight in terms of the facility condition assessment. But a lot of that is going to be our work with you moving forward. You're going to set priorities as a board.
Right.
Based on data, but also based on what you know to be a need. So a David Rees, although it was modernized under the state program, the board very well may want to see additional work done at David Rees, and that'll be the work. So we can supply you with the data, but there's also going to be additional needs that just from your perspective, the community's perspective, the site's perspective, none of which is captured here, because these are just numbers of what you might want to see at certain sites, and what Ms. Penno, Ms. Cherry, and Mr. Hoffman might want to see at other sites.
Yeah, because on page seven, it says, "Immediate needs ranked on scales of five priorities." You mentioned those five priorities, but we don't know those.
So those are, that's built within the condition assessment, it's an industry-standard tool, so there's priorities defined in that document, which you'll see.
We'll see that in the workshop?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what, yeah.
That's different than, you know, that deals with mechanical and roofing, but there's health and safety pieces in that as well. So those are those five priorities. That's an aside from saying you want to see a career academy at a certain high school that we don't currently have.
You said we're going to have, you're going to a workshop in May, and what's that workshop?
That's called Next Gen, so it's Next Generation Learning Environments. It's a workshop in May.
Right. I think I've seen another one regarding facility development I need to send you to, or.
Please.
Okay, yeah, okay. Also, now, this, you mentioned, or some time ago, we had, you're working on a five-year master plan. This isn't part of the master plan. Well, part of it is.
This is a one component of that entire document.
Okay, one piece.
And it'll be a 10-year, not a 5-year.
Oh, 10-year master plan.
So you.
And so, and so far, you talked about growth facilities, and next, number three is learning environment. So is there other components that you'd be speaking on the 10-year master plan?
Those will really be the three components that we'll bring together as a package.
Okay.
And that'll be one very large document, I can assure you.
So how soon are we going to get the 10-year master plan?
We'd like to see the board adopt it as soon as this coming fall, which will give us a year going into the following November 16 date that we keep talking about.
Would it be possible, would that be used in the bond?
Yes.
Process?
That just, that, what that does is present the need.
Right.
So you can't, you can't go to the public and say, "We need this," without presenting the need. So it will identify the need.
But November, oh, we're in 15.
Well, see, he mentioned that they're working backwards from the date.
Okay, I see, yeah.
And then that's where the workshops are being plugged in accordingly.
Correct.
And hence the fall update, which is in adequate time to meet the November bond deadline.
Okay, I see, I see the plan, okay.
I think the seed's planted, I think we've talked about it, I think people generally know, but we don't have a document that presents that overall need, and for people to feel it, appreciate it, understand it, and agree with it.
Right, so we have to go through our workshops to get through.
Okay. The last thing is that when we're at the legislative hearing, like Los Angeles, they had, I mean, how many, about 600 portables, right? They're talking about all the portables they had, and their process of modernization, this and that. So do we have a plan to transition from portables to actual classroom 21st century environment, classroom environment?
That's going to be.
Will that be a part of the component also?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
So, okay, we're going to do this very similar to what Los Angeles is doing in their plan.
Yes, exactly.
Getting rid of those portables.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you to my colleagues. And Mr. Pierce, just a couple of comments, just to summarize a lot of the questions. Looking forward to the upcoming workshops, I think that's where we will really be able to delve in to some of the specifics as it relates to the different schools. I do want to mention that, you know, this board member, I definitely travel throughout the district and visit school sites well beyond my own boundaries, more so actually in some of the other districts. And one thing that I will say, regardless of the age of the school, there is tremendous pride in our campuses, with the, with our schools, with our students, with our staff. So regardless of the age of the school, you will see wonderful schools, you'll see clean schools. There's a lot of pride that goes into that. So I definitely wanted to recognize that while we do have aging schools, there's still a lot of love and pride for those schools. The second point I do want to make, and it's something that I will get emails on and phone calls, and it gets a lot of attention, which is really the 54 contemplated future schools, and I'm sure Mr. Herberger is going to make that his headline, and it will get the emails as well. But to the point of where some of my constituents have raised questions, is not so much the funding of the schools, but how are we going to sort of cope internally with that sort of growth? What will staffing look like? What will our programs look like? With this growth, are we going to compromise quality? So these are just some of the concerns that I've heard over the last year, once we did put it out there, that we are going to have this tremendous growth. So, you know, and that's just obviously for the future, but as we look at not only modernization, but our future schools, I think a complimentary piece should be, and it's something that I'll bring up during the workshop, is what the district is going to look like as that grows. So that if you're a parent, if you're a community person, and a stakeholder, and you're going to be selling the bond idea, you want to have that buy-in, and you want to make sure. I think one of the things that we're known for, obviously, are tremendous programs and services. So just that, sort of that complimentary piece of, you know, we're not obviously growing overnight, but how is that going to be phased in, and what will that possibly look like? I think just, it goes back to the education, back to the stakeholders, excuse me, of what that would look like. And then my third point is, I'm a firm believer in early advocacy, and it's wonderful having Ms. Titus working with CSBA as being an additional eyes and ears to all of the good work that we all do. But I would like to see us, as a district, also advocate collectively to our legislators. So I think what was helpful in the past is having three board members, so you don't have a quorum, the superintendent and whomever else, but I think to really focus in on the facilities issue, because unless they're hearing from us over and over and over, somebody else will be doing the talking points. And I think we are our best advocates, in addition to CSBA. But I really would like to see us increase that participation level, particularly, we live right here locally, and it's very convenient for us to not have that increased level of participation and engagement.
And if I may.
Yes, sir.
Because you make excellent points, so I hate to, but I can assure you, there are talking points being shared with members of the legislature that are 100% inaccurate.
Yes.
And they don't even, they don't remotely approach the severity of the issue if the state goes down the path they're currently headed, in the position that it's going to put you all in, and more importantly, students. They just don't understand the severity of it. And you bring up another great point, Ms. Allen, this is not an indictment.
Right.
Of our existing facilities, as Mr. Heinecke shared, the industry-level experts who do this nationwide.
Yeah.
Our facilities are in great shape, but there is still a tremendous need.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Fortina knows that. It's just like your car needs new tires, it needs oil change every once in a while, needs a paint job. This is no different. It's not an indictment, but we would be remiss if we didn't start identifying and mapping out our needs.
Right.
So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Fortina had a follow-up.
Yeah, two quick points of clarification for me, and I may be wrong in my understanding. I was under the impression that we need, we were required to have a certain percentage of portables that went along with a fixed facility. Is that true or not true?
Very smart man, Mr. Fortina. The state program, for a number of years, absolutely, and ironically, required you to have a certain percentage of portables. And in the eligibility that Ms. Titus Espinoza asked about, you were rewarded if you had a certain amount of portables. So if you had a new construction project through the state, at least 20% of those classrooms had to be portable. And in order to generate eligibility for future classrooms, you were rewarded if you had those. What the state has now done is walked completely away, and is now saying portables are not a good expenditure of bond funds. In some cases, the portables don't even, you're still paying the debt service on the bonds that paid for the portable, and yet the portable is now decommissioned and out of shape. So it's no longer a requirement of the state program, but it certainly was for a number and number of years.
But yet, we, and I'm sure we're not unique, we face situations where we have aging portables that are not in good condition.
Right.
At school sites that have pretty much maximum capacity. So what do you do with the kids? Give them to somebody else?
So they don't require you to build them anymore.
Yeah.
But they're an absolute tool that you need, especially in a district like ours that sees ebb and flow with its growth. And you can move them, hence the name. And so they are a smart way to deal with growth, but beyond 20 years, one might consider replacing them with either a permanent facility or a newer portable. But it is no longer a requirement, and that's fairly recent.
We had similar experiences in Elrata Union, where we actually replaced 12 portables on one at Pondrosa High School, and built a permanent structure there instead, reset up the whole campus, the layout, the way kids moved through the campus was significantly better, and you had a modern building there. So that's one of the things we talk about, is to go back and look through, we have new growth, and we're going to build new schools, and that's fun. I know, it made a lot of work, but building new schools is fun. But we have a huge responsibility in the equity piece, and going back and looking at what are the layouts of our current schools, and how can we better do that? And sometimes that may be a portable building, sometimes that might be a permanent building. And so those are all, you know, strategies we'll use moving forward.
Okay.
And you will help us make those decisions on an individual basis as those projects move forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And my last one, I just want to clarify the point, you know, those who know me know my mind goes in 100 directions at one time, and sometimes I don't totally get a point. Did you make a statement in response to Ms. Titus, that we have, under the state requirements, that we have a capacity requirement to meet?
So they compare two things, it's a state-derived enrollment projection.
Right.
Compared to a state-derived capacity analysis of your district. That is, I hate to say this, but it's true, it's in no way, shape, or form reality. So it's a state voting standard, and a state-defined classroom, minus a certain number of portables, as you brought up earlier. So it compares an enrollment projection to a state capacity, and the difference is your eligibility in the program.
They could play a great chill game.
Yeah, it's very interesting, it's welcome to my world, it's.
Thank you, Rob.
It's complex, but it's.
Point of information, yeah. When I went to the mixed elementary school, and I spoke to the architect regarding that shark fin turn, the reasoning behind that was because they had to do that turn because the possibility of portables there. That's what he told me.
If I know the condition that you're referring to, it's a tie-in of our new sidewalk with the city sidewalk.
Right, that corner right there. And the reasoning he told me, he had, they had to go that route instead of being a smooth turn, was the fact that the possibility, or they needed enough room for portables in the near future, if that happened. That's what he said. That's the rationale.
There is a footprint at all of our schools for growth portables, should the need arise. It's just proper master planning. So we have that at all of our schools. Whether or not that pushed that sidewalk out, I can't say for certain.
Well, that's, yeah, he showed me the actual blueprint.
All right. Well, I want to thank you, Mr. Pierce, Mr. Heinecke, and Ms. Williams for your presentation. All right, moving on, public hearing, action items, there's none, discussion none. Moving on to online board agendas, Mr. Steve Mate.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Titus Espinoza.
I'm going to sit out this part of the conversation again.
Thank you very much.
I just hit a wrong button here, where'd it go? Good evening, I'm here to talk to you about the online board agendas. I'm basically just doing a quick follow-up to see if there's any more questions you might have, or any more information that was not covered in the board communications, where I tried to capture the questions you had. And then also ask that the board takes action on the staff's recommendation for the, moving forward with the phased-in approach for the online agendas.
Any additional comments or questions from last time?
My questions were all answered, thank you.
Well, I have one more. Will we have access to California education codes on those computers, or downloaded?
They'll be available on the internet, these will have access to the internet.
For instance, if I'm here, and I want to refer to so, an educational code, it'd be on my hard drive, instead of going on the internet.
You'd be able to do that, yes. It's a laptop that you can go have access to anything that's on the internet, and you can download.
So I have to go through the internet, it would not be downloaded?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you. At this point, I would like to call for a motion on the recommendation to implement the phased-in approach for converting to on, Agenda Online by CSBA.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the online phase-in process as proposed.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's? And we have one abstention for Ms. Titus Espinoza. Thank you, sir. All right. Do we want to let Ms. Titus know that we are done? She heard. Oh, she's right there, excellent. And we are on board member and superintendent reports. Any committee hearings? I don't think that there were any from our last meeting. Mr. Superintendent, you have something? Yes, Mr. Fortina.
Just by way of a quick update, had another SARB committee meeting. We have, we have two more proposed. We may have to, there may be a possibility of adding to that because of the work to be done. But we do have two more meetings in which we would come to fruition on a document that would spell out not only with clarity what the SARB process for Elk Grove Unified School District would be, and how that effort should be staffed. So we're getting really close to that coming forward, and certainly, from the perspective of our budget discussions, would be brought forth by the superintendent at a point in time. So we're getting close.
Very good. Mr. Hoffman?
And I just have a little bragging to do. So I actually got out of the office for about a day and a half over the spring break, and so was able to get down to Fresno, watch my son play three baseball games, made three of the four, and he hit the game-winning triple, and with two outs in the game, so I was pretty excited. And then I got to spend two and a half hours with my other son, talking about life in general on the way back. So you don't get those opportunities that often, so great opportunity, so thanks.
Excellent, thank you, and congratulations to your family. Ms. Olivia?
I don't know, I went to the plumber and pipe fitters apprentice shop, and we toured it. There were some local representatives, city council members and such. It was quite impressive, and a facility I knew nothing about prior, so.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we are moving on to consent agenda items. I'd like to call for Mr. Fortina's assistance.
Great, I'd like to move the consent agenda. Items number 11 through 27, 11 approval of minutes. Items number 11 through 27, 11, approval of minutes, 12, personnel actions, 13, certification of administrator's competence to evaluate, 14, very old term, credential waivers, 15, approval of purchase order history, 16, disposal of obsolete surplus property, 17, acceptance of gifts, 18, ratification of contracts, 19, ratification of non-public school, non-public agency, NPS, NPA contracts, 20, approval to purchase computer equipment, 21, approval to purchase student classroom furniture and cafeteria tables, 22, approval to participate in NorCal Schools Joint Powers Association, 23, Monterey Trail High School ASB Alumni Scholarship Expenditure, 24, new high school course, 25, instructional materials adoption, 26, out-of-state, excuse me, field trip approval, 27, water conservation efforts.
I'd like to pull number 27. Only because we, he had a news conference, is that relevant data, or he requested 25%?
So, we received an update last week, or the last time, as you recall, in relation to the 25% for Mr. Pierce.
And so, the resolution tonight is just a resolution in support of the governor-mandated water conservation efforts.
Right.
Granted, they were different when I presented to the board at our last meeting. There was a 20%, now it's increased to 25%. So, that happened last week. We're working on it. We've met with all of our water purveyors. We've also met with the CCSD, and I understand you folks had a two-by-two as well, so we're working with them. We currently believe that we're already meeting the 25% goal because we water two days a week.
Right.
It's what the mandate is requiring. We do have one water purveyor who is allowing three days a week, but we're already at two days a week there. The only other relevant change really for us might be the governor's executive order includes no watering of ornamental landscaping adjacent to commercial and public buildings. So, that would be landscaping adjacent to our classroom buildings and whatnot. And you now can't water within 48 hours of any rain, whereas I shared with you last time, you might get a complaint that we're watering the day of or the day after a slight drizzle, and that's because that field needs even more water, even in spite of the rain ahead. So, those will be some changes. I was going to communicate with the board that the regulations as a result of the executive order won't be adopted till mid-May. Upon the regulation adoption, then I'll send a B.C. to the board to let you know what changes to expect relative to the presentation I gave to you at your last meeting.
So, it's okay, use the 20% now or what?
Oh, in terms of the language in the resolution, you can certainly amend that verbally to 25%.
Yes, that's what I suggest. Well, I mean, your recommendation.
Brian, while only has intensity until the regs are adopted, the executive order right now, it'll be vetted through a process, so I would be hesitant to do, make that change yet until it's mandated through regulation, but it hasn't been vetted.
Right. So, we'll address it if that need comes back.
It's okay.
So, we can amend it next time?
It's okay, sure.
Okay.
So, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval, 11 to 27.
All right. Sorry, second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.